Of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please, Ms. Arms.
District one, Darryl Jeter.
Here.
District two, Michelle Glover.
Here.
District three, Eddie Skeen.
Here.
District four, Michael Bricky.
Here.
District five, Danny Castile.
Here.
District six, Chris Manus.
Here.
At large, Stephanie Addington.
Here.
Supervisor, you've all had a chance to read the agenda. Are there any additions, corrections, deletions? We have a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make that one.
Ms. Manus made the motion, Ms. Glover second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And on to the minutes. You've had a chance to look at the minutes from the last meeting of July the third of twenty-four. Any corrections to that? We have a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Jeter made the motion.
I'll second.
Addington second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now we move on to the citizen's expression. And before we actually open it up to the citizens, we've got some visitors here that we need to recognize. We've had some great success in the county for the fast gear in sports, and we've got the Raco softball team here, and we've got Colton Kilgore from Twins Springs. So, Colton, if you'd come up to the podium, please. Put your glasses on then. Colton Kilgore from Twins Springs Supervisor in our district. He is the champion in the twenty twenty-four Virginia High School League One-A State Champion three hundred meter hurdles. And we want to present this to you in token of our appreciation. And I know how hard it is being an individual in these meets. It's really hard. I appreciate you, appreciate what you do. Supervisors, anybody can say anything.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Yeah, definitely. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Want to get a picture? Slip that in here. Before you go to school. That's great. Great. You hang in there. Don't be late. It's fun. You're having some good times in your life. Appreciate you. Thank you. To be start with, the softball team coaches coming up here, please. These are my kids in no way is one. I've got two back here that I was associated with a long time ago, and one might have gone to school with me. On behalf of the board supervisor, it's good to have you here. And we wanted to get you in to present you the plaque. It's presented to the Raco softball team, twenty twenty-four Virginia High School League One-A State Champions. Presented by Scott County Board Supervisor. Coach, I guess you...
Thank you.
All right. Now, girls, we're on TV two ways here, and I want you to, if you will, come around here and step up here. Give me your name, if you don't mind. Maybe your parents. And where you're going to, are you single? Are there any seniors? Okay. I'm anxious to hear the names because I know your dad very well. He played baseball at Raco when I was principal. If you would, step up here and tell them your name, and like where you're going to school, your seniors.
Olivia Edwards. I'm the daughter of Michael and Casey Edwards, and I'm going to Als Lloyd.
Great.
I'm Kinsey Hood. I'm the daughter of Nick and Leslie Hood, and I'm going into my senior year at Raco High School.
I'm Montana Dillo. I am the daughter of Billy Dillo and Amy Bowen, and I'm going to Southwest Community College.
I'm Maddie Wood, and I'm the daughter of Stacy and Jason Wood, and I'm going to Bolivian University.
Coach, I'm sorry.
I'm Peyton Kearney. I'm the daughter of Tonya Lee and Jeff Kearney.
I'm Nick Hood. I'm the head softball coach at Raco.
Michael Edwards, assistant softball coach at Raco.
This is your daughter?
Olivia. Yes. Yeah. No, we've got a bunch of kids out there for media day over at Raco for, or we had a little bigger crew here. So, we also have the daughter Morgan on the team. She's cheerleader, so she's media day.
David Carter, assistant coach. Y'all want to circle around here. The Times News has moved up here. We'll let them get a picture.
Get closer. We're afraid. Hey, we would say, I hate reporters.
Supervisor, any comments?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
We never point out you. We're very proud of all of you. Appreciate you coming in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we'll open it up for citizens' expression period. Let me read a little verb here for you. Citizens' expression period is the point in the meeting when anyone who wishes to address the board may do so. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium and state your name, where you're from in the county, and or what organization you represent. The board may or may not respond to anything you say, but we will take everything you say into account when making future decisions. Please keep your comments concise and businesslike. If no one's signed up to speak, we have no particular order. We ask that you take turns and speak your business. Any action will be considered after we close citizens' expression. Mr. Kevin Helms wanted to speak this morning, so we'll let you.
Good morning, members of the board. I'm Kevin Helms with the Treasurer's Office. And I'll give you a little bit of history of the dog tag ordinance that we have. It's been in place for quite a while. And when I was in office before, we had a program in place where the county tags were sold at several of the local veterinarian offices. And over the years, I think that just kind of fell by the wayside. When I took office January first, that was an issue that I looked at. And I've met with three of the local vets, or, well, I've met with all the vets, but three have decided to sell those tags in their offices again. A one-year tag is five dollars, a two-year tag is, or excuse me, a three-year tag is ten dollars. And then they have lifetime tags as well. But what I'm here to request, and I've met with Ms. Addington, is that the revenue for the sale of these dog tags, I would like for that to go to the animal shelter. Because now, it's currently by ordinance, it's just going into our general fund. And I feel like the sale from the tags could benefit the shelter in the expenses that they have. And that's why I'm here this morning. If anybody has any questions about the dog tag. I have ordered more tags. They'll be going to the vet offices soon. And so, when someone's there to get the rabies shot for their pet, they can go ahead and buy a county tag. Wouldn't have to drive up to the county office to get that. It'll be a convenience for the citizens of the county. And I'm just asking for that revenue to go toward the shelter.
Okay. We will talk about this after we leave.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? Do you think the ordinance needs to be changed to do that?
We looked at it, and I think that we're going to have to designate the line item for it to go to.
It doesn't...
Outside of the ordinance.
Yeah, what I've read, it doesn't specify anything about the revenue, but I would just like for it to go.
Just do it. All right, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have one signed up for public expression. Is that correct? Okay. All right. Anyone else for public expression this morning?
Good morning. And I'm Peggy Toss from Snowflake Road. I had appointment rescheduled so I could be here, so I'll have to leave early. But I'm here on account of the dirt roads again. And we're so thankful for the rain that we got, but guess what? The roads are worse. And I'm just wondering if VDOT could put in some drain pipes on these dirt roads. That would fix the Band-Aid fix that every time a rain comes, it washes what they do. If they just put in a few drain pipes, or if they, do they use drain pipes anymore on dirt roads? Stephanie, you know, Lockon Hill, Springs Road, Snowflake Road, these one that's real, the one I've been complaining about, it's really, real, real bad now. And then another thing that has been, people talk, they know I come to these board meetings, and they bring up Riverside properties. Is there something that they can do to bring money in instead of money going out? Like, a community college, it's been mentioned, a community college for our kids in Scott County instead of them having to drive to Wise or East Tennessee State or wherever. And then another, they said, well, just sell it. Can you sell it to get the money back to Scott County? And Mr. Kilgore, I'm still want Mr. Kilgore to get more money allotted for dirt roads. Because to have two hundred and fifty mile of dirt road in Scott County, that's nothing to be proud of. And I think he's our key to getting more money allotted for dirt roads. And the six-year plan, I wish we could come up with another option other than the six-year plan. But I'm here to keep Snowflake Road on six-year plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tom. Anyone else?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm no speaker. I'm so nervous. But I am an animal lover. I've groomed dogs for twenty-five years.
Name your name, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Catherine Stallard. I live on Big Moccasin. I'm a transplant to Scott County from Wise County. I started grooming dogs in ninety-three, retired in twenty-eighteen. But always been an animal lover since I was little, big enough to drag in a stray for my mom and dad to deal with. I still foster for several rescues in Fredericksburg and Charlottesville till I can get them on the transport ban. But, and I'm ashamed that I've not come sooner and done something sooner. Because when I call about a dog, or a cat, or a horse, I want the Virginia law enforced. And the law now is, an animal can't be left out in the heat over eighty-five degrees, or in the cold under thirty-two degrees. And I've made calls about a Great Pyrenees mix. It was in ninety-six degrees in the sun. And the people that are on Big Moccasin have just made a little circle of a makeshift fence. And back in the winter, they moved that dog over to another little circle, but they left its doghouse in its other circle. And it stood in three inches of rain. You can, I've got it on my phone. It rained three inches the day before. The dog stood in the rain and was soaked to the bone. And then it got twenty-nine degrees that night. So, I called Animal Control. I had to go by there. I'm a caregiver for a lady in Snowflake, and I went by and saw that dog out there curled in a little, I thought it was dead. I thought it had froze to death. But anyway, he went, and they did move the doghouse over. When these people moved here from Texas, I messaged them, and I said, you know, why don't you move your dog back twenty foot where it can get in the shade? It's a working dog. And they said it's got a doghouse for shade. Well, I also have a picture on my phone that shows you it's, a doghouse is an oven. It's hotter in the doghouse than it is outside. And I've seen that dog try to get in a little three-inch slice of shade right up against that doghouse. But, I mean, it's just something all the time. And people know I'm an animal lover, so they're telling me about this stuff. Somebody that's at work today, but did ask me to tell April Mead that lives in McConaughey, her neighbor Shannon Sluss, I think has been put in jail, but he had a mom and dad and six pups that was killing her chickens, and it also killed Kenny. And they had sent video to Bill Dennis and Jake three times. They said you have to have proof that it was, and they had video that they sent to them. Well, the dogs are still up there fending for themselves while, you know, nobody's feeding or watering. And of course, they're going to kill whatever they can kill to eat. So, those dogs need to be picked up and taken to the shelter. You know, they're just on their own. The other caregiver that works with me called about, a man moved off and left about twenty chickens with no shelter in a little pen. And they were being killed off one by one. And she called several times, and nothing was done about them. So, she went over and tried to put a tarp over them to give them some kind of shelter. But anyway, I have ordered up the Virginia Animal Law Book, and I'm going to study up on the law. And I want my tax money to go to enforcing the law for these animals. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Garrett Baker from Boosie Creek. Just wanted to give you an update on VDOT, Mike. And they have moved in on Boosie Creek, and they're doing a good job cleaning out the ditches and the culverts. And they're using a type of equipment that does a whole lot better digging out the ditches than them old road graders used to use, do. And doing a good job. It picks it right up out of the ditch and puts it in a truck. And just wanted to give you an update, and I wanted to thank Michelle and Eddie, and also our governor for, you know, moving them around and helping us do that much. I'm hoping they'll do all of Boosie Creek. If they do, we'll be in high cotton for a while. And another thing, this lady back here brought up Riverside. That is a, that is a great idea. We, we need to do something with that property down there. It's not manufacturing, or a big box store or something. I don't think we ought to sell it, but anyway, we ought to find something to go in there. And it looks like they've had plenty of time to do that. And, you know, these call centers, on average, they don't last but about eighteen months anyway. So, I hated it when they put that in there. But anyway, that's beside the point. That's water under the bridge. But, you know, just be more transparent. I've heard that you all know a lot more than we do. Well, I'm sure you do, and I hope you do. But be transparent with us. The citizens of Scott County deserve. And the last thing I've got to cover, I'd like to see you all do something for the farmers of the county. I'd like to see you get land use in this county. It would be fair to the, it would really greatly help the county, farmers in the county, and it would equal out, instead of putting all, most of the burden on the farmers to pay the taxes, it would equal the taxes out. And anyway, that's something to think about. And if you need somebody to speak to, we can always get somebody to, to talk to you about it if you want to discuss that. Somebody that knows a lot more about it than I do. But Scott County is just one of thirteen counties in the state that don't have land use. And I think Lee County and Scott's the only one that ain't got it down here in southwest Virginia. So, anyway, it's something to think about, and it would greatly help the farmers out in the county. Thank you, Mike. Thank you all.
Anyone else?
Good morning.
Sheriff Pete's, Scott County Sheriff's Office. I got my stats for, we didn't, I didn't do it the second quarter. So, this is for a six-month from January to end of June stats. For the Scott County Sheriff's Office, the following activities, Central Dispatch received a total of thirty-one thousand one hundred eighty-four calls for the first six months of twenty twenty-four. Of the total calls received, Sheriff's officers received five thousand three hundred sixty-three were dispatched to Sheriff's Office. We had a total of domestic calls and protective order of eighty-six. Criminal papers served this period was one thousand seven hundred forty-three, one thousand two hundred twenty-seven felonies, five hundred sixteen misdemeanors, with two hundred ninety-seven drug charges and twenty DUI-related charges. Officers also had four hundred sixty-seven traffic summonses and was dispatched to a hundred and sixty-four motor vehicle accidents. Civil process this period was one thousand nine hundred two civil papers served. Also, there were seven hundred eighty-six IBRs, incident-based reports, with a hundred eighty-eight active, four hundred and one marked inactive, and a hundred and ninety-seven closed arrests. Sheriff's Office provided one thousand two hundred fifty hours of courtroom service, or, excuse me, security, for three courtrooms, four hundred sixty-four hours of front door security for the courthouse. Also, the officers conducted forty-four traffic checkpoints. Also, the Sheriff's Office had a hundred and fifty-two out-of-state extraditions, and they traveled sixteen thousand seven hundred and thirty-three miles or traveled for these out-of-state extradition. Also, the Sheriff's Office traveled forty-four thousand one hundred sixty-seven miles for the month of July. We didn't have all the stats for the following, but for the month, they traveled forty-four thousand one sixty-seven. Year-to-date, total extradition is two hundred and seventy-six. Sheriff's deputies provided thirty-five in-state transports. Also, they processed three hundred sixty-three concealed gun commits. The Sheriff's Office processed a hundred and six fingerprint applications, and also the deputies unlocked one hundred vehicles. And that's that report for that six months. If you may have any questions, or I can answer, or try to answer, I don't know what's right there. But just, we're pretty busy.
Looks like it. Any questions, Supervisor?
Just appreciate what you and your staff do.
We appreciate, appreciate you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Anyone else for citizens' expression this morning? If not, we'll close citizens' expression. And next on the agenda is a public hearing. Mr. Chairman, when will you discuss some of the topics that's brought up today in citizens' expression? I suppose we can do it now, or we can do it at the end, if you want to present it to end. Unless some people might need to leave. I just, if it's okay, I'll ask Mr. Dennis a question. Ms. Stallard asked about, or made comment about calling in some of the animal complaints. I don't know if she's aware of the ordinance that we passed about dogs. Would you go over that just briefly?
Good. About what you, is that not the two cases that she...
Well, not necessarily that, but that I'll ask later. But about the ordinance we have now, you can call in complaints, and you'll get responses.
Right. Well, running at large of dogs is placed in the ordinance now that prohibits your dog to run on someone else's property. But the way we enforce that, we're not looking for dogs running around. So, if a dog's on your, if my dog's on your property, you don't have a problem with it. Animals' dogs don't have a problem. If you have a dog that has a problem, that's causing a problem, that dog will be charged with trespassing now through this ordinance. It's, animals run at large. It's not like a leash law. In the case of Ms. Mead's dogs, I spoke with animal warden yesterday, Jake, and he had been applying that to those dogs. And most of those dogs have been picked up, or he could. So, they've been working with this situation. The Great Pyrenees and Big Moccasin, is that the one in the big pen, the big fenced-in pen?
It's, it's a little makeshift circle of a mesh fence.
About a half an acre, though?
About as big as this, see how that, that there's circles?
Yeah.
It's, the circle is about this big.
Okay.
And the dog is in the middle of it.
Must be another dog.
And Jake told me, it can get out of that fence if it wants to. Well, it's, that dog shouldn't have to save itself and get out of the fence.
Okay. Well, just time to see which, which dog we call now. We've had quite a few.
It's right across from Danny Galeno's house.
Okay. I'll speak to the greater side of the particular situation. That's the ordinance in the nutshell. Other than a single dog, if Animal Control does see a pack of dogs running at large, we may be proactive in getting a hold of the owners on that, because a pack of dogs usually will end up causing some sort of problem on their people's property.
That's great.
The other question I had, if somebody calls in a complaint, what's the process in addressing that and giving feedback to the person that's calling in the complaint?
Well, that would vary significantly on what the complaint is. You know, if it's a complaint that the dog just bit me, it's usually immediate, try to, try to get there as soon as possible kind of thing, do the investigation. If it's a dog in somebody's yard, you know, that's not an emergency, it'll be put on a docket to be able to go when, when we can, you know, as, as time, time allows. Because you can't be, you know, you're not, we don't, we have one, we have a litter control officer and animal control officer that fill in for each other. So, you've pretty much got like one and a half person for each park. So, it takes time to go and investigate and catch a dog and find out who the owner is. But usually, the process, if there's a dog problem, the first step is to figure out who it belongs to, if it's a stray or it belongs to someone. If it belongs, if they find out it belongs to someone, they'll go and talk to that person and say, here's the problem. Y'all need to do this, this, this to fix it. And hopefully, that the owner of the dog will take responsibility for whatever the problem is and fix the situation. If not, Jake usually checks license at that point, rabies tags, to make sure the dog is legal. And then just go from, go from there. If it's a situation where the dog is in distress, or is in a situation where it's, that would conflict with the animal control laws as far as husbandry of the dog, the first thing you do is say, you need to fix this problem to the owner, and, and give them opportunity to fix it, and then follow up, and if they don't fix it, you know, you can go, go from there to charge with cruelty to season the dog, such.
But once contact's been made, you've been out to visit, then you, someone follows up with the person that's filing the complaint to tell them what action was taken?
Yeah, we, we... Yeah, we, we, I re- reiterated that to Jake to make sure they follow up to the person that complains. That hasn't been processed before because you're dealing with the owner and the dog. And he may be having a plan, he may have a plan set with that owner to take care of this problem. But the person who made the claim, made the complaint doesn't see that. So we, we try to make an effort to contact the complaint to let them know, hey, this is going on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
They, they may not always be satisfied with what actions we can take, but we're bound by the law of what we can, can do.
I, I've got a speaker pen. Just, just for one instance, I'll tell you what I went through. Jeff Burton, which is, this wasn't his first, he moved out of a trailer near my house. And we didn't know he moved out for five days and then my husband heard a dog, could see a dog in the window barking. Now, he moved out October thirty-first. I called Jake November the fifth and said, Jeff Burton moved out of this rental property October thirty-first. Nobody's come back. There's dogs locked in that trailer, okay? Jake came and put a notice on the door. And I told him, I said, he's moved out, nobody's gonna see. So it took me ten days and I got the owner up there, Betty Dean, to unlock the trailer. And I called Jake and I said, I've got the owner here to unlock the trailer. We've got the dogs out. He came and got those three dogs. I had pictures of the dogs, nothing but skeletons with skin stretched over them. They had been locked in that trailer for ten days. Their hair was coming off where they were so malnourished. They had to eat the linoleum off of the floor. I had all these pictures and told Jake, I wanted to press charges because this was, happened right in my back door, okay? He told me court was going to be nine-thirty, January the twentieth. I got up early, got ready, came over here. The lady down there where you go through the detector said, no, that's not on the docket. He told me it was going to be February seventeenth. I got up, I got ready. He said, it's nine-thirty. No, no court. Then I, I texted him, record to see if it was going to be March seventeenth. He said, no. He said, he's not been served. Said, we can't find him. I said, well, he's living over in a trailer at Ricky Burke's Trailer Court in Nicholsville. So anyway, this went on and on, March, April, May, June. And then in July, I called Bill Dennis. Well, actually, when I called him, when I texted, and I've got all the texts on my phone to prove what I'm saying is true. I texted Jake April the twentieth and he said, for you to, for you to go into the court over this case, you've got to be subpoenaed. He said, send me your name and address so I can get you subpoenaed. I gave him my name and address, no subpoena. When I contacted Bill Dennis, July twenty-fifth, months, months, months. He said, well, that case is already over. So I wasn't told about it. I couldn't show my pictures. I couldn't testify what I knew. So that, that's my dealings with animal control. And before this, I moved here in twenty twelve. Peanut Marshall put four horses in a field right beside, that joins our property. He never came back, never came back. No food, no water. Well, the horses were starving to death. My husband had square bales of hay in the barn and we were ridiculed. My husband said, I cannot let those horses starve to death, so yeah, he put out a bale of hay for them. Well, then it was our fault because we fed them. We should have let them starve. Well, anyway, it took a dead horse and John Puckett to get those horses removed out of my face. And they were put, they were taken on in Russell County and Russell County confiscated the three left that was living. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think from what we've heard today, this is reoccurring. It's not the first time we've heard this. And I would like to request that some research be done into these issues and have a solution going forward.
Okay, Bill. Want to make that into some kind of motion or just suggest it to Bill or suggest it to?
Let's say a presentation, discussion about it at our next meeting. I know that's a long time, but we'll get to the bottom of it. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
So I'll, I'll make a motion that we have Bill present about this issue and talk through this issue at our next meeting.
It's not only this issue, I think it's previous issues we think.
I've heard of three, since I've been on this board, horses and dogs, myself in the last I've been here first year. And it's not, you're not the first one that's mentioned it. I've got taxes and stuff that people sent me pictures of animals. And so it's really getting to be a bigger problem than I was aware of till I got here. And now I see it is a big problem. So I think that's something definitely we need to address as quickly as possible to try to solve, solve this problem because you've got the heat, dry weather now. And I've seen over the years, the same thing is, I'm sure we've all seen, tie a dog to a barrel on a chain. So it's like a heaven to me, you know, when you put a dog in a barrel in a metal building. And I've seen it over the years. But I do see it has got better, but it's still ain't been cured.
Can we table this until next month until, without a motion, until we can get some more research done on it? We'll have it on the agenda next month. How's that? Okay, citizens' expression has been closed. Now we're, number seven on the agenda is public hearings. This public hearing is on the possible adoption of amendments to the Scott County, Virginia zoning ordinance to amend number one, section three hundred dash one hundred point nine, commercial use types, daycare centers. Number two, section three hundred dash one hundred point thirteen, miscellaneous uses to add solar generation facilities, utility scale. Number three, section three hundred dash one hundred point one three, miscellaneous uses, towers to delete tower height restriction. And section number four, I'm sorry, number four, section six hundred dash two hundred point one three, miscellaneous use types to add definitions for solar facilities, decommissioning, solar generation facilities, small and solar generation facilities, utility scale. And we will open public hearing on these four sections. Anyone wish to speak? If not, we will close public expression and ask for comments from the supervisors.
Did that lady want to speak there?
Do you all want to speak?
Sure, let me get up here and speak. Good morning. My name is Sharon Culberson. And I live in Nicholsville, right on Twin Springs Road. Solar panels are being proposed to be put directly in front of my home. One thing I have a concern about is in our small community at Nicholsville. It's quiet, it's beautiful, we have peaceful surroundings and some places we have magnificent views. I've been told by a few people, and I have to agree, that I have a million-dollar view from my front porch. And I do, I have to agree. So it's being proposed that solar panels, and I'm talking hundreds of solar panels, being put in front of my home, fifty feet off of a roadway, which a road is going to be put in, proposed in front of my house that would lead into these solar panels. I've been told that there'll be fences around these to keep, I guess, deer or whatever. These fences will be eight feet tall with barbed wire up at the top, which to me would be like looking into a prison. So this to me is going to be not a, I guess, the surroundings will change, the, the the view is definitely going to change for me. I'll be looking into solar panels, I'll be looking into a fence with barbed wire that will be looking like, to me, it's going to be like looking at a prison, I feel like. So my view will be gone. There will no longer be a million-dollar view. This is also going to affect me with some, with some others. Our, our property value will decrease. So my home might be worth X amount of dollars right now. But when these solar panels go in, that's going to drop significantly. Because who's going to want to buy a place with solar panels right in front of your front door? Or your back door, or your side door? In Jase's case, Jase, it's going to be all around him, it's going to be beside him, behind him. Phil and Randy, it's going to be in front of Phil, like me, and Randy behind him. Am I correct, Randy, behind you? I'm, I'm speaking for them. So like I say, Nicholsville is a small community. We thrive on beauty, you know, quietness, peacefulness, just the all-out of views and, and things like that. And if we have somebody come in and put solar panels, to me, that's going to be ugly. I just feel like it's going to be ugly. It's not going to be pretty to look at. And would you want it at your front door? That's what I'm asking. Would you want it right at your front door, at your back door, beside of you where you're constantly going to see it all the time? And knowing that it has now decreased the value of your home, your property. I mean, you might have a five-hundred-thousand-dollar place that may not be worth three-hundred thousand now because of it. And I have other concerns, you know, like what is this going to do if, if a solar panel breaks? Or what kind of things could it release from this? I'm not a very good speaker, but I come from a big city. I was born and raised in a big city until I married and my husband moved me to Scott County, which at first I thought, Lord, where has he brought me to? And he has, he has since passed away. He's been gone a year and a half. And I will tell you, he would not be happy about this right now. He would not. And I can't see leaving my home. It's one that he left me when he passed away. I feel safe, I feel secure, and I have this beauty in front of me, in front of my home right now. And it's peaceful, and it's quiet, and it's gorgeous. I don't want to go back to that city life. And I just ask that everybody here just take consideration, not allow these in front of our back doors or back doors beside of us. Put it somewhere else where nobody has to look at it, where it doesn't have to be seen. I mean, there's a lot of land around. Don't put it in front of somebody's front door, back door, side door. Don't put it where you're going to have to see. And, and imagine having visitors come into your town of Nicholsville saying, welcome to Nicholsville. And then that's going to be the first thing that they see as soon as they drop through. They're going to see hundreds of solar panels. How attractive is that going to be? It's not. Visitors probably going to say, well, this is just like a big city somewhere out and we don't need to be coming back here again. There's, there's nothing beautiful about this place. Look at how ugly all these solar panels are. Look at this big tall fence that looks like a prison. Who wants that? I don't want it. And like I say, this is my home that my husband left me whenever he passed away. I don't want to leave it. But I don't know that I can deal with seeing that every single day in front of me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Did any of the rest of you want to speak before we close the public hearing again? You did well, man.
I'm Larry Vickers from Nicholsville. I've got a question more than, I do have a presentation, but unless you're really interested in the background of some of this, I won't ask to do that. If you want it, I'll be happy to go through it. It'll take about twenty minutes. But the question I have, where are we with the ordinance and what's in the ordinance? To deal with the solar, the solar panel systems. I mean, I think if we can get an answer to that, and that's a satisfactory answer, there's no need to go any further.
Yeah, I, I think there's been some misunderstanding about what exactly this public hearing is. This public hearing is for the ordinance. Do we have a printout of the ordinance that we can share right quickly?
We can read it.
Yeah, we can read it out to you.
I can read it to you.
There is regulations on there on decommissioning, on how they're supposed to be, what they're.
What's the details of it, though? I haven't seen it.
It's in that book right there on the table if you want to look.
Okay.
That's not all.
I mean, can you put a condensed version together of what we're looking at?
Stephanie, if you would.
I don't mind to read it if you want me to read it.
No, it's pages, some pages.
Several pages?
Yeah.
It's like five or six pages, so. Would you like to give the revision that just dealing with the solar?
Yeah, just with the solar.
I could, this is, these are the amendments for today, and I can give this to you.
Let me just ask a couple of questions.
So you can have some idea.
Oh, sorry.
Are we doing anything? Pardon?
Sorry, just one more thing that I want to make sure that's clear. This is about the amendment of the ordinances to put regulations around solar facilities. This is not for a particular solar.
We hadn't finalized anything, is that what you're saying?
That's what today is.
There's been no application for a solar farm in Scott County.
I understand, but you're going to have an ordinance before they make an application.
Yes, that is the, that is the goal of this.
I'm wanting to know what's in the ordinance. So if they come in, what's going to keep them from putting that solar panel farm within, right up against the, the boundaries of Nicholsville, an old town that's been there since eighteen thirty? That's a serious, serious problem if we don't put something in the ordinance that says you've got to be at least two miles out of a town that's incorporated and a setback of so many feet if it's a primary highway and so many miles around if it's a, a home resident. If you look, one of the things that I researched and found out is, and I don't know why they put this in there, I have no idea, but the World Health Organization says there should be no solar panel farms within one and a half miles of a primary resident. And they certainly shouldn't be solar panel farms within two or three miles of an incorporated town in the county. If you go to other locations, you will find all those are away, I've been up toward Richmond, up through there. They've got them up there, but they don't, they're not in residence and they're out, away from, off the road. All of them are set back off the road. The one that's proposed in Nicholsville is right up against the road, seventy-one and then Twin Springs Road. We've got to have some meat in there. It's like when I was a little boy, I would test my parents' limits to the hilt till Dad went out and got an apple tree limb and laid it on the fireplace. And then I, I've become a little more obedient, I guess you would say. But anyway, I, there, there's, if you look at Pivot Energy, I'm just going to give you a couple of bullets here. Pivot Energy was founded in Demer, Colorado. In two thousand and twenty-one, Pivot was bought by a holding company in New Jersey. I can look it up on, I don't want to get the names. In two thousand and twenty-three, guess what? That holding company sold Pivot Energy to a company whereabouts London, England. The probability of these companies being sold and resold is really, really high. If, if you look at what's going to happen when these, all this, this money's coming from federal funding. federal funding. No way in the world could you put in a solar panel farm without federal funding. On the front end is where the majority of the revenue is. One, it comes from engineering. Two, it's project planning. And those, those jobs, project planning and engineer, they're probably building those things back to the federal government somewhere around three hundred fifty dollars an hour. Lot of upfront money. Then it's like a reverse hockey stick. The revenue goes down. Guess what? There's a good probability it'll be sold out to a bottom feeder. And then they may go bankrupt, and we'll be sitting here in the county with a lot of solar panel farms. The farmer won't know what to do with, and the county certainly won't know what to do with.
Mr. Chairman, was the, what was the extent of our discussion about solar panels today? Was it going item by item, or was it just broad?
Well, we were sent, uh, last week, a summary of, of all the solar panel, uh, discussion. Did you read it?
I did. I'm talking about the general public, the people are here today. If they, I think they would like to see the details. Is that what you're asking for?
Yeah, details of what's gonna be, what kinda teeth is in that zone, zoning. It, it can't be a general term because those people that are coming in here to do this are salespeople, and they've got a lot of bright people gonna be working that. And they've got a lot of loggers that's gonna be working to, to look in holes in that zone. If you don't have teeth in the zoning, th, th, they'll work around it, guaranteed.
I'd like to make a recommendation on this, on the solar portion, that we table this to our next meeting, make the information available to the general public, and allow them time to review it.
Could we just read it?
You're talking six pages.
That's fine. I got a good voice.
Okay.
We'll, we'll read it.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, we've, we've been down to the, uh, to the, uh, planning board, and we've been through that. We've had meetings in Nicholsville. We've had calls with the salespeople. The salespeople come in and they, 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 they really paint a great picture. They're gonna give you ten percent off of your, uh, electric bill as a discount. What they forgot to tell you is that the transmission lines that they're gonna have to build that's on your Appalachian power bill every week, every month, you're gonna have to pay for those lines to send power up to Northern Virginia to data centers. If you look on your power bill, there's something called Transmission Line Services on there, probably around forty, fifty dollars a month. That will be increased to pay, to build those power lines that they're gonna have to build to get that power out of Scott County to move it somewhere else. And it's going somewhere else. It's not gonna be here.
Mr. Maynes, that, that, just on the solar portion, is ten pages. You're saying you wanna go through all ten pages?
I think the people deserve it, don't you?
Oh, sure, but I didn't know if we wanted to do that today or just give them an opportunity to review it.
Well, we need to adopt the ordinance today so that it's...
Yeah, the ordinance, we would have to send out notice again for the ordinance for another, uh, public hearing for that. So I, I'd like to, if we could, just wrap everything up today. Part of the changes that we're proposing are for daycare facilities, and that unfortunately is wrapped up in with all of this. And I'm trying to make use of some of the commercial property, like out at the Bray Farm, for our sits, and so I'd really like to get that passed if we could.
Can that be separated from the solar portion and...
As it stands, it was recommended by the Planning Commission as a complete package. That's with the cell phone towers. I know you have had a special interest in that as well. So, um, I'm perfectly willing to, to read it all today, and we can say here, my voice is a little bit boring, and I'm sorry if you'll fall asleep.
Let me just say, you can separate out...
We can.
Yes, uh, and one of the things that is administrative, you know, the zoning ordinance is pretty thick, and, you know, we try to administratively combine amendments so that it's just printed once on the minute book pages and that kinda thing. So that's one reason we look at it, try to get everything in there that anybody has talked about lately at one time. But that's not a have to. You can go on with the daycare and the tower height deletion amendments today and have another public hearing if you want to on the solar next month. It was advertised for two weeks in the paper. It has been available for people to know that this was coming and to read the ordinance, but we can make it more available for a longer length of time and have another public hearing next month on that rather than read it today.
And the Planning Commission has had a public hearing and did recommend unanimously an approval to bring it to the board. So they have already heard it, had a public hearing, and sent it to you guys for consideration.
Will it take a motion to postpone?
Where, where was that public hearing, the Planning Commission, beyond the one that we were at, and we talked about it, and I did the presentation?
The next month. And it was also advertised?
I can't keep up with what's going on, I guess. That's probably my fault, but...
Do we need a mo, motion to postpone the...
Well, hold on, what, what, I, I would like to see if we can, if we can reach some resolution here. So I'm hearing that location is one of the issues, so maybe we don't have to read all ten pages of the regulations. Maybe I can go through and address some of the issues that people have with that, eh, with that.
Well, I can give you, I can give you two or three things is, no, no cell phone or no solar panel farms within two miles of an incorporated limit.
That's not in there.
I, I know it's not, but I, that's, that needs to be in there.
But I didn't see it in anybody's ordinance.
And no, no, no solar farms, it has to be set back at least a thousand feet from any primary road.
Would, would, this would all come up during the application for the special use permit, though, wouldn't it? This is, this is not allowing...
No.
This is not allowing solar, solar energy by rot. This is, still requires a special use permit.
Yes.
And those special use permits have to be approved by the Planning Commission, and then they have to be approved by us as well.
I mean, with all due respect, we have to run the Planning Commission down. They never come back to us and say, what do you think about this? God dang it, that's their job. They need to be more forthright in what's happening and what they're planning on putting in a document, not go back and close the door after we leave and, and put something in there. That's not fair. It is not fair.
Amen.
They need to be more transparent, and they need to put out a document and say, what do you folks think about this? And we don't have to come and try to figure out where they're having a meeting, when they're having a meeting, and keep up with it all the time. And maybe you can say that's, we're not being aggressive enough, and that's probably a well-founded argument, but the other argument just is well-founded.
Uh, how, how was this advertised? This was advertised in the paper, correct?
Yeah, and on the website.
And it has links to all the documentation?
No, it says it's available here for review.
Okay, so they would have to make a request to get that?
I'd like to say something. The gentleman there, when he's speaking earlier, he's talking about the putting it on, burden more or less the farmer after that thing got years old or could sell out. The farmer in the county would be the one responsible, uh, cleaning, cleaned it up after it's no longer. I think that's something that needs to be in there.
You could put that in there. Here's the danger of that, Danny. The danger is that these companies are holding companies, and they're just money investors.
That's it.
And they'll, they'll, the, the, the good guys and the guys that make a lot of money do the fun and stuff. And then they sell it off to a bottom feeder. And guess what? They go bankrupt. For, it's hard to see zero. You usually come up to zero.
Then it leaves it back out in the county of the farmer or...
Well, it belongs back to the farmer.
Or the one that owns the property. You know, I don't own it, farmer.
Yeah, at the end of the day, the county's still gonna have a mess on its hands if they put in several hundred acres. Let, let me give you an example here.
Could I say something, Larry? Just, uh, several of these things are actually covered in here, but that, from what I'm hearing, people are not aware of what's in here. Is that what you're saying?
Yep.
And that's why I suggested providing them something that they can look. It may answer all their questions.
I mean, just, just while we've been sitting here, I've been searching through this document. There's, there's doc, uh, there's information on visual impacts, that the solar facility shouldn't have any visual impact. It, there's regulations on setbacks, about what kind of trees they can have in there. There's everything, so...
To, all the way to decommissioning?
All the way to decommissioning and who's gonna be on the hook for that.
It's in there, but...
And who has to...
The end of the day is, when they go bankrupt, what are you gonna do?
The landowner in county's gonna have to...
You're right.
Upfront money, the bonds that would cover that, decommissioning?
There is bonds.
Which I'm thi, thinking, there's a lot of stuff in there, but they just don't know what it is. It'd take a lot of time to cover all that.
I mean, I got nothing to do today.
Right now, these things are changing hands because there's money in it. The next step is if we change the hands because there's no money in it.
Yeah.
That's, that's the next step.
Yeah, so what is the, what is our decision on this? Do we wanna sit here and go through point by point? Do we wanna make it a little bit more available to people? And just to be clear, this is not for any one facility. This is regulations that...
Cover.
Cover multiple facilities that may wanna locate.
I, I will make a suggestion to you, is get the Planning Commission back together, and then we go through a line item, a special call meeting or something, and Sally can draft up whatever, and we go through a line item, a line item, and, and see how much we agree and disagree. Cause I know she's got, she's got restraints on what she can, uh, actually put in a legal document versus what I would stand up here and argue, so. But I think it would be best if we, I, I'd be happy to sit down with Sally, and we would go through line item and see what we could put in there, if that would work. I'll, I'll spend, I'll, I'll spend some time to sit down and see if we can come to some agreements.
I think most of the stuff that you are, I think, more than what you would even think about seeing is in, is in these documents.
I do too.
It protects, uh, sorry, excuse me. It protects, uh, prime farmland. It protects the people. And they still have to go through a special use permit, so we can, we have the latitude to say, hey, you don't need to be this close to the town, you're not close to residents.
You mentioned land in Scott County. There's, uh, X number of acres in, in Scott County, but Scott Duro told me that there's twenty-four thousand five hundred acres of cultivated land. What's the solar panel farm people looking after? Level cultivated land. And he's really concerned about the food supply and what it could do to the food supply. Let me, let me give you another example. It takes nine hundred acres to do what one nuclear, small nuclear modular system will do on, uh, thirty acres. You know, coal is here for a long time. A lot of people don't wanna, progressives particularly, don't wanna go with that, but coal, there's ample coal out there. It's the cheapest generator, uh, that you can get. But the next generation, what they're gonna, you're gonna have to go somewhere, is probably the small nuclear reactor. And they've been using that going back to the nineteen sixties on submarines and aircraft carriers. I worked in electrical engineering in a new, new shipyard for ten years, never seen an incident when I was up there. Built four or five submarines a year, an aircraft carrier over three years, and overhauled a bunch of them, never, there was never an incident with those reactors, so. And they'll generate as much power as you can do on nine hundred acres with solar panels. So solar panels at the best is twenty percent efficient. That's the best. They don't work when it rains, they don't work when it gets dark, and da, da, da. And you, you can't afford batteries to, uh, charge up during the day to have power at night. But they will outrun data centers in Northern Virginia during the daylight hours.
I'm curious to what source you were quoting when you mentioned setbacks in that?
I'm sorry?
The source you were quoting when you mentioned setbacks?
That was just, that was just me.
So there's no...
Well, no, the, the one setback, World Health Organization said, shouldn't be within one and a half miles of any resident. I can't think of any, with my background, I can't think of any reason, uh, for that. But that's out, if you go up and research it, that's one of the things that they recommended. Not an absolute, but a recommendation.
So what do we wanna do? I'm willing to read through this all today and, and work through it point by point with you. I'm sorry if anybody else had anything to do today. I'll have to call in for the rest of the work as well.
Is it credible it has to be done today? Now, she said we could separate the other items.
I mean, if, if we can separate them, let's separate them, and then we'll, you know, right after this, or, you know, you can even go right across the hall right now and, um, make copies of that, probably.
The meeting could be over very shortly if, if we put off the solar farm discussion until next time, just postpone it. And then after the meeting, you can go over and sit down with Mr. Vickers and spend all afternoon reading it to him.
Y'all wanna sit around, do they?
This afternoon?
Okay, I've got a question. Do we need a motion to postpone this till next?
I can come back later. I've got some stuff I've got to do.
If there's a, if there's a time that would work better for y'all, it, it'd be fine?
It'd be better for me to schedule one of the day, cause I got some, I got some other business I need to take care of.
Maybe you two could schedule a time between now, the next month, before our next meeting?
Yeah, yeah, that'd be fine.
Would y'all, would y'all be available to that? I, I know people probably have, uh, things to do today.
Well, I'm just driving, so I'm gonna go when my ride goes.
When are y'all available? Or are you all, all in contact with each other? Is there someone I could reach? We'll sit down and talk about it. Go through it point by point.
Could we provide the pages, just the revision, uh, the solar portion? It's ten, it's ten pages. We'll have to look at it, then if they want me with you, then I'll go.
Like you've done, wait. Uh, my name's Phil Broadwater. I live on the Twin Springs Road, and my concern is, is the location. Can you tell me point blank how far away a solar farm will be from my house? I mean, how close can they put it to my house?
Looks like there is some information about setbacks. Um, a hundred fifty foot from all, uh, public right of ways. That's for any kind of structure. At least a hundred foot from adjacent property lines.
Like, that's right at that location, I mean.
Three hundred feet, and additional buffering may be included in the conditions for a particular permit. But again, this is not for the specific one in Nicholsville.
No.
This is where we start with all projects, and then we work with them through that special use permit process to move those around.
In other words, if, uh, somebody wanted to ask for permit, they would go by those guidelines?
They would go by these guidelines first. And then they would bring it to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission would review it and then make a recommendation whether or not to send it to the board supervisors, and then the board supervisors would make another decision based on that special use permit. So there's still quite a bit of...
But there's no teeth in it right now to prevent them from putting it, or applying for an application for right there on that property?
Yes, but there's no reason that we would approve that unless they've met all the, uh, all the requirements and that the community was, uh, uh, in agreement that they were approved of.
Well, can there not be something put in there that, that a solar farm has to be located like a mile from a residential property, or...
I don't know. That might be hard to do in Scott County.
Cause it'd be no way that you could get a solar farm from a mile to somebody else's property.
On this, on this proposed ordinance, under location, appearance, and operational requirements, visual impacts. The applicant shall demonstrate through project citing and proposed mitigation if necessary that the solar project minimizes impacts on view sheds, including from residential areas and areas of scenic, historical, cultural, archaeological, and recreational significance. Use only panels that employ anti-glare technology, anti-reflective coatings, and other available mitigation techniques. All that meet or exceeds industry stand, standards to reduce glint and glare. This is two sentences out of, how many pages did you say?
It's ten.
Yeah, oh, and, and it does, there is a, a setback thing here, but a hundred and fifty feet from all public right of ways and main buildings on adjoining parcels, a distance of at least a hundred feet.
That's what you were reading, right?
Yeah, so, okay, let's, let's separate the two because there's some confusion, I think. Let's go ahead and do the cell phone towers and the daycares today.
That's what I'm saying.
We need to do that today. What time do y'all wanna meet here and when?
You're talking about others than today?
Yes, we'll postpone, we'll postpone the, the solar. We'll postpone number two and four that we're talking about.
Give me, give me some dates you guys got available.
Any date you wanna meet. Which one?
That's a tough one.
He's pretty lenient.
Well, let's just say before the next meeting, okay? Uh, so that just, that gives us about three good weeks.
You want me just to call Sally or Frieda or somebody and set up a date?
With that? Yeah, I'm right here. I'll give you my card. You can call me and set up a time.
Okay.
If you don't, uh.
Ms. Kegley, could we provide the ten pages for them today? Is there anyone here that can copy?
I can do that.
I'd like to do the cards.
I'm sorry, here.
I can put your phone number.
I think everybody here.
You can take it back with you and we can sit down and hear it.
If I don't answer, please just leave your voice mail. Sometimes I'm, I'm working.
Give me your phone number.
Yes, sir.
Everybody gives a better understanding of it.
Five nine four, two one five oh.
Two one.
Five oh.
Mr. Man is there? That way y'all work it out, figure it out, what needs to be changed, whatever y'all discuss, I'll.
I would suggest that, Ms. Kegley.
Yeah.
What about putting a solar farm down on the Bray property?
That would be awesome. We could get some interest.
I'd like a winner to make. He's nothing.
It belongs to the county, doesn't it?
It belongs to the EDA.
Well.
In around about.
I've been told that, that I've been told that it's, uh.
Yeah, I mean, if they're gonna have a solar farm, that'd be a good place to put it.
Okay, I've heard that comment once too.
Y'all good?
Do we need a motion to postpone this?
There's someone else who wants to speak.
Oh, is there before we do that?
Yes.
Okay.
You're still in the bottom tier.
Thank you, Mr. Hickory.
Okay.
Good morning. Quentin Wood. I'm with Newly Energy. I'm a project engineer. Uh, our company's based out of, of Old Boston. I'm a resident in Virginia Beach, Virginia. Thank you very much for working with us through this ordinance. I know we have provided some red lines to Sally and the planning commission for their consideration. Uh, one of the items that I did have still questions on was the definition for site owner. As it reads, it sounds like that's the actual property owner. And in some cases, uh, at least in our particular case, we lease property from the landowner for the development of the sites. There are some companies out there to actually just go out and purchase the property. Uh, so my concern is listing or having the definition of site owner and then tying that to the decommissioning section of the ordinance would involve the actual landowner. We like to keep them out of, you know, our business per se between us and the county if there was any type of an issue with the decommissioning portion of things. So, I'm not really sure, you know, if there's a way to rewrite the definition or is that something that we can handle through the S U P process uh, to make sure that the landowner, you know, is not involved within the decommissioning aspect of things. It's just solely kept between the county and the operator of the facility or the owner of the facility as opposed to the property owner. So, but then, um, I guess I'm willing to, if you would like any assistance when you're going through the ordinance, I'd be more than happy to come down and sit down with, with you and the community members and go through it as well to try to give a perspective from the solar side.
And, and Quentin, I think that a lot of people are, are very specifically interested in a development that's been proposed a while ago by Pivot Energy up in Nicholsville.
Yeah.
So, I'm not, I'm not sure how worried they are about countywide, but I would love to have you.
Okay.
Yeah. If we can find a time that works for everybody.
Yeah, yeah, most definitely. Thank you. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. All right, so I'll make a motion that we separate the solar issues from the cell phone and daycare issues in our ordinance update.
I think you could make the motion to approve each, each one's decision. So, we're willing to approve the daycare and the tower amendments to the ordinance. And at the same time, you can postpone the solar.
Okay, so I can make that all in one motion, okay? Yeah, I was gonna do that in several. All right, so I'll make a motion, motion to approve the changes for miscellaneous use towers to delete, uh, tower height restriction and miscellaneous, uh, sorry, sorry. Commercial use tops daycare center. And then to postpone the discussion of miscellaneous uses, solar generation facility utility scale and miscellaneous use tops, solar facility, decommissioning, solar generation facility, small and solar generation facility utility scale. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
No, second.
Mr. Keane, second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. So, now we will close public here.
If we want to give a, a break.
Yeah, let's take a break.
We'll take a break, so Ms. Kegley can make some comments.
Another public hearing on proposed update to Scott County Comprehensive Plan concerning smart and scale projects. Free do you want to?
On the comprehensive plan, you all were emailed that with some changes. The tables have been updated with the newest census data. And the transportation section was also updated to include our smart scale location, which was the natural tunnel Parkway US 23 intersection on the end nearest the Redstone Drive-In. So that smart scale application, I got that submitted last week. So we're hopeful that we'll get that funded in the upcoming round. We should know something probably by the end of this year. Under land use, I'm sorry, goals and objectives in section nine, there was also, I'll get there and I'll read it to you. A section that was updated, you may want to take this out depending on how you're feeling today, I guess. Renewable energy, the goal promote the development of renewable energy sources such as properly sited utility scale solar energy farms, wind energy facilities, and advanced nuclear reactors. The objective is to guide a development that has a positive impact on the citizens of Scott County and that is consistent with the current Commonwealth of Virginia Energy Plan. Under policy, number one, special use permit would be required for a facility within agriculture and residential, general, commercial, and general industrial zoning districts. And number two, follow good zoning practices when considering location of solar, wind, and/or nuclear. That's pretty broad goal and policies, so that was included. We did clear up some language things. The plan hasn't had a complete redo in many, many years. And as you know, Virginia Tech is going to be taking on this project as one of their capstone projects for the fall and spring semesters. So we will be doing a complete thorough upgrade of the comprehensive plan. But I just needed changes specifically to the transportation section updated for our smart scale application. The planning commission did adopt this comprehensive plan update at their July 8th meeting with recommendation for approval by the full board.
Okay, we'll open public expression for discussion of the update on Scott County Comprehensive Plan.
Morning, members of the board. I'm a representative of District 3, Tim Addington. Just here, took a quick review of the comprehensive plan last night. I wasn't really sure exactly what all was going to be discussed today. But a couple of topics that just want to bring your attention to, just a quick review of. And regarding page 37 regarding public safety. It fails to mention that Scott County has 911 and GIS. Scott County has had enhanced 911 that includes TCPR, EMD for many years, or EMD for past, but for several years had enhanced 911. And for the county and towns. I think that's something that would probably be beneficial to have in that because in working with other localities, other parts of the state, you hear where economic development different looks at the various different documents and looks at comprehensive. So in reading the document right now, it implies that Scott King does not have that service available. And there's only like 7% of the nation that does not. So that may be something we want to add to the public safety portion of that.
We'll be sure to get you involved when Virginia Tech does our plan rewrite. I'll give them your contact information as well.
That'd be great, we'll be glad to. And the other is on page 40. It mentioned cellular service, five cell service providers serving the county. And that it was at 90% coverage. And I think with other work that's being done with Lenoir Westco and others to try to get better cell service in there, that is, that's not accurate being 90% coverage in the county.
What would be your best estimate?
Just a estimate, I mean, you're 50% at best.
Is that household or land area?
On this 90%, I'm not sure. That's one thing, maybe a clarity of that document if they are talking about that. You know, cell towers are located, I mean, if it's AT&T, you're looking at corridor based. So you're on 23, basically along 23. When you go according to 72, 71, you're going to lose that. Get more with Verizon on some other areas there. But I'm not sure the five cell service providers, there's really a big three now that's involved out there with that. And in regards to the previous public hearing, thank you for the suggestion and splitting that out. But I think a lot of them would probably been interested in this one or the discussion that's on that as well from the Necklesville community. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Hi, my name is Peggy Matthews. I'm from District 5, live up on Sinkin'. I wasn't planning to talk, but I heard in this plan mentioned the small nuclear reactors. And I just want to bring your attention to that one and make sure you are up on all the research and all the cons to having these small nuclear reactors built in our county. The main thing is they're going to end up being much more expensive than any other energy producing. The record has shown that they'll say it's going to be pennies on the dollar for your bill. And by the time they get built, it's going to be 10 years out before anything would be developed. The costs of developing and designing these things are going to be borne by the ratepayers. This is what the legislation got passed in this last General Assembly. We're going to be stuck with the cost, not just of running the thing. Even if they don't get built, the ratepayers are going to be paying for those costs of the design and research. So I just want to put that in your heads. Study this thing very carefully before you agree to allow any small modular nuclear reactor. You got to think about waste. Where are we going to store the waste? Right now, it's onsite waste. And we're in a very, we're karst formation, we're very unstable land. So I'm just putting it out there. You got to think very hard about it. And I can provide more information when the time is right. There's a whole group that's been studying up on this and a lot of concerned citizens about this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak? Close public expression. And we need to approve the update. Any discussion before we ask for a motion to approve the update?
Yeah, the comprehensive plan doesn't really have any teeth. It's not allowing anything. It's saying that we want that for our county, that we want it to be an energy generation county. I think if you look at Scott County right now, there are very limited avenues to where we could generate our own power and expand our industrial base. Except, with the exception of TBA in District 6. So that's across the creek there in Duffield. But if we're going to be serious about industry and about growing the county, then we need to think about what we're going to do to build our own energy independence in some sort of way. Whether that's solar, whether that's SMRs. And you're right, the research is a little bit far out on those. People got excited about them a little bit too quick. But I've worked in nuclear facilities before myself and I don't blow in the dark yet. So the technology is getting there. But you're right in that it's still, they're still trying to figure out how to actually manufacture those at scale.
You don't need to be the game piece.
But we have to do something as a county to make sure that energy generation is a part of Scott County. There are, there is one decommissioned coal mine in May. There's some gas wells up towards Hiltons. Really, we don't have any natural resources or power generation inside the county. And we need to change that if we want growth. It is something that we desperately need. Or, you know, we can just push all the industry to Duffield. I'm happy to take it. My people will take all the well paying jobs and good benefits that VFP and the Mattress Factory will offer. But I want that for every block in Scott County, I really do.
We have a motion to approve this update?
I'll make the motion to approve it.
We have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Manus made the motion, Ms. Addy's in second, all in favor, signify the same eye. Opposed, motion carries. We move on to new business. The first item is Scott County EMS agencies. And this concerns all of our EMS in the county use a state reporting form called Elite EMS. And this is through Image Trend. I met with all the EMS coordinators in the last two or three weeks. And they informed me that the state had refused or had quit paying Image Trend. So Image Trend had canceled Elite EMS. But I just found out this morning, Mr. David Gillum's here speaking for the others, that the state has decided to pick that up again, correct, Mr. Gillum?
That was my interpretation, Paul Roger Carter.
Right, so this is not an issue now. Free do you have anything you want to add?
The state's going to continue paying until December 1st, 2025. So this may be something we have to address in next budget year. The three EMS agencies have been under the Rescue Squad Association. So we would be paying one price for all three, which would be about $10,000. But hopefully Senator Puglian and Delegate Kilgore both are working with the state to try to get this continued. So continuing to work with them, hopefully it'll be something that the Commonwealth will decide to go ahead and continue paying even beyond the 12/125 date, but just so that's on your radar. But it's not an immediate need like we originally thought.
Free do, is that $10,000, is that per year or per month?
That would be per year.
Per year, okay.
And that's for all three agencies.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I had, everybody had the right information.
But they, I believe Mr. Carter just got the letter from Image Trend late yesterday saying that they had been in communications with the state and they were going to continue to pay through 12/125.
Okay, any other questions or discussion? We'll move on to Duffield Ace Fireworks Permit. This is scheduled for August 31st. It is on your tablet if you want to take a look at it. Mike Carter is, I guess, supposed chairman of Duffield Ace. And we need a motion to allow them to use Crooked Road Tech Center for their fireworks on August 31st at 9:30.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Manus made the motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Jeter's second, all in favor, signify the same eye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Motion carries.
Everybody come out to Duffield A's, that's great.
I think I met you down there last year.
You sure did.
Bet you glad you come now.
Next on new business is planning District One Behavioral Health Performance Contract, Ms. Starnes?
This is also on your tablet. Um, it's several hundred page document. This has to be approved every two years. The Board of Supervisors did approve last year, but there is a list of changes that I have included. It's just a formality that this, this board has to approve their performance contract each year. If you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
Any, any discussion, board, or questions? We have a motion to approve this contract.
All moved.
Mr. Judah made the motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Manus second, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is the Big H Company Real Estate. Please, Ms. Starnes.
This is a lease that we've had for the past three years with the Big H Company. And it's for the victim witness office space. And the lease agreement is on your tablet. It will be a two-year lease, August first, 2024, through July thirty-first, 2026. I just need authorization to approve that lease and authorization to sign and send back.
Questions or discussion?
And that's already in the budget and covered by?
Yes, it's in the budget at the current amount. So when we amend, we will have to put the additional in there for the lease amount. I believe we were at five-thirty or five-forty and it will be $700 to look forward.
Real estate's going up?
Any questions or comments? Do we have a note, motion for Ms. Starnes to take care of this business?
So moved.
Ms. Addington made the motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Manus second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda on the new business is Scott County Courthouse. Ms. Starnes?
Let me take some mic. Let's give him a heads up. I've put together a PowerPoint that I want to go through today. We've went back for about twelve years on items that we have upgraded at the courthouse. And this is just the background for everybody to show the number of offices just within the last ten years that used to be in the courthouse that have now been, you know, moved out of the courthouse because of space, because the court system just continues to grow. So I'll go through this, uh, won't take a lot of time. You know, several months ago, you all gave us, I guess, the authorization to move forward with talking to Mosley Architects, who's our A and E firm for the courthouse, about some options instead of utilizing two properties like was planned to move everything to the courthouse site to see if that would create some savings instead of rehabbing a building and doing our inmate, or yes, our inmate holding and Sally Port at the courthouse. So I do have those costs then, so we'll go over those as well. So first thing, twelve years ago, we did a bell tower renovation at the courthouse. We invested about $288,000 on that project. And included with that was some upgrades to the staircase in the foyer as well. In 2014, this is when things really started happening at the courthouse as far as moving offices around. Atka did have space downstairs in the Community Services Building when it was originally built. So they were moved to the Health Department Building down in Daniel Boone. And that freed up a small office area downstairs where it was reinvented, re, renovated for the Treasurer, Commissioner of Revenue and the building official to move down there. So we did that in 2014. And the Sheriff's Office investigators moved into the former Commissioner of Revenue space there at the courthouse. And then the main stairway was enhanced as well at the courthouse. And it provided additional accessibility. Then in 2015, we had a fire at our animal shelter that was located at the landfill at the time. A new facility was constructed in Daniel Boone on property that we already owned there. It was a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar construction cost. The animal and litter control officers were working in the courthouse until this point. So that was two more offices that were moved out of the courthouse at that time in 2015. Also in 2015, it was decided to add the second floor of this building. When the building was originally constructed, it was constructed structurally so that a second floor could be added in the future. So that took place, that was a $2.8 million investment. What a deal compared to today's construction cost. So that moved the county administrative offices, juvenile court services, and economic development onto the second floor. And we still had some, quite a bit of shell space left for future needs. Around the same time, the Annex Building, where the Sheriff's Office was housed, was deemed unusable. That building was actually condemned. So that the Sheriff's Office moved to the county administrative office space, which was under the, the Library Building where they're currently housed today. And then that opened up additional space in the courthouse so that the Commonwealth's Attorney's Office could expand. So that is where they are currently in the first and second floor, above each other, I guess, for the Commonwealth Attorney's Office. So the courthouse renovation in 2016, we renovated the Circuit Court Room. That was a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. The Circuit Court Judges at that time moved into the old Library Building, which was, is the little house beside of the courthouse. So they used that for office space. And in 2017, 2018, we spent $35,000 to build out shell space here on the second floor. And that's when your Treasurer, Commissioner of Revenue, Voter Register, Building Official, and EDA offices moved around. Voter Register, we had received notice that the DMV building rent was gonna be pretty astronomical increase. So it was more feasible to bring them under the same roof as the other offices and make that a better situation for the citizens as well, cause everybody's located centrally. And then Social Services were working in closets. They were just jam-packed and had no extra space. So they renovated the Treasurer, Commissioner space downstairs and moved into that. So on the first floor of this building, we have the Health Department and Social Services take up the whole bottom floor. And then in the court, we did some minor repairs to the courthouse. We painted the columns and the exterior trim. And then we also renovated the Circuit Court Clerk's Office space, which is much more user-friendly now for the citizens. It's a really nice work area. And 2019, 2020, the probation offices were asked to vacate space in the courthouse. The judges were asking for another hearing room where they could meet and have, you know, a, in, more intimate setting for J and DR hearings. So we asked probation to move out. So we spent forty-three, forty-three thousand, I mean bifocals, forty-three thousand dollars on that renovation. It did build two judges' offices in that hearing room. And then we spent about $11,000 to renovate some space for the Scott Service Program in the old jail building. And we put a new roof on the courthouse during that period as well. So in 2021, the courthouse just kept expanding. And we sent out an RFP for services to conduct a courthouse space needs study. The goal of this study was to get the needs and the growth projection for the next twenty years. So there was many meetings with all the individual offices with Mosley. And they had forms they filled out and completed on what they thought their growth would be for twenty years. And we went through that process. And Mosley came up with five suggestions and renderings based on all that feedback. So once that was brought to the Board of Supervisors, it was a huge price tag. Those went from twenty-six million to thirty-six million dollars. And the board just, you know, couldn't afford to do the project. So we started looking at other options of what we could do. That's when we purchased the Compton Building with the intention of moving the Commonwealth Attorney's Office into that building so that that would free up some space where we could do some additional space in the courthouse. So these were the, the five options that we had. Like I said, they ranged from twenty-six million to thirty-six, thirty-seven million. They were adding additions. One was a completely new rebuild. So a lot of different options they looked at. And they came and did their presentation to the board. But because of costs, like I said, it was just, it wasn't moved forward. So in that 2022 study, the cost escalation factors, five years was at eighteen percent. Ten years, thirty percent. And twenty years, forty-three percent. So the longer we go, the higher everything's gonna get. I mean, you saw the 2.8 million it cost to build out this whole second floor just a few years ago. Since COVID, everything, as everybody knows, is just crazy expensive. So in 2023, which was just last year, we were having issues with the old jail and felt like it was not safe to have Scott Service workers in there as well as the inmates. We were using that for inmate holding still for their court cases. The regional jail transports those over and puts them, would put them in holding until their time in the courthouse. We felt like that wasn't a safe situation. So we ordered a custom Connex container box that was placed behind the courthouse for the inmate holding. And we're currently still using that. Scott Services was also moved from the old jail building to a rented space. And we also started hearing rumblings about, the Compton Building may not be the best fit because of security and some other issues for the Commonwealth's Attorney's Office. So earlier this year, we came to you and got an agreement with E. Luke Green to do a demolition project of the Annex and the old jail building. The project is still ongoing. It should be finished up within the next month or so. We also have the Compton Building on the market to sale. And then we talked about, talking to Mosley about developing something at the courthouse that would work for inmate holding, a Sally Port, and for the Commonwealth Attorney's Office. And that's where we're at today. So I have a proposal from Mosley Architects to get us through construction administration if you did a project. And what they have proposed is an expansion of approximately 10,400 square feet at the courthouse. The cost of their services is $406,000. And that includes the development of the schematic, the design development, construction documents, bidding and construction administration. And I know this is hard to see, but the right corner was phase two of what we were already paying for. So you have your schematic design there of the Sally Port and of the inmate holding. And drawn in by hand around the back of the courthouse and the side would be new addition that would be for the Commonwealth Attorney's Office. And that's on one and two floors. So that's where the 10,400 square feet would come into play. And based on my estimate with inflation from the 2022 prices, I have that estimated to be about a little under $7 million project. The debt service for fifteen years on that, at a four and a half percent interest rate, would be about $678,000 a year. So I don't expect an answer today. I just need to know how this board wants to pursue, proceed with the Mosley contract. That's a lot of money that doesn't need to be spent if we do not have a project planned to go forward. So my ask is for you to take this information and mull it over. And, you know, if you need to talk amongst yourselves throughout the month and just, you know, come back in September with a path forward. I think that's where we need to go, either no project or a project. But something will have to be done in the near future to handle the inmate holding situation. So any questions?
Inmate holding, if we do it like it, it's, it's on this plan, will take away where the Commonwealth Attorney's Offices are.
That's correct.
And that's the reason we're having to go back to the east and around the village. Is there any way that we could leave Commonwealth Attorney where they are and do a Sally Port around them and leave them where they are? And not do the north and the west building that's been penciled in?
I can talk to Mosley about that option and see what they think would work.
Bill, can you bring that back up on the?
I've got it. Sorry. Can you put us to the whole slide view? Or play slideshow?
Mr. Brickie, you were thinking Sally Port being number one priority?
I think it is, yes.
The inmate holding would be the number one.
Yeah. Okay, see now on the, on the right side, in the, in the L that goes down, that's where the Commonwealth Attorney is now. And if we go with a new proposal, it would include the back part, the north side and the west side to build for offices and, or maybe all of that would be Commonwealth Attorney, correct?
Yeah, it would be.
And the upstairs too, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and the upstairs.
They would be upstairs too, Commonwealth.
Yes. If we could leave them where they are now and, and just redo the, the east side for a Sally Port, you know, inmate portal, that would really cut down on construction costs.
Would that lock us out of any expansion in the future though? If we were to continue to expand.
That's one of the things that we asked them when they worked on this, was to make sure it was done in a way, because, you know, it may be twenty-five years from now and it might be way past our time. But at some point in the future, it's gonna have to be done, whenever that is. So we don't want to do anything now that would create a cost burden in the future on how it's designed from here.
And we don't want the future Board of Supervisors cussing us.
Yeah, wondering what they were thinking, you know? But they did do this with that in mind.
Okay, good.
Is the inmate holding taking up all of the, the space both floors?
It was inmate holding on the first floor. And on the second floor of that, it was for victim witness. So we wouldn't need to lease the space for them. It was moving them back into the courthouse as well. And then there was also an office space for a J and DR clerk because, you know, from our conversations with them in the past, they had petitioned to the state to split those clerks' offices. And there's nowhere currently in the courthouse for that split to take place if, if that is something that they are wanting to proceed with.
How far out on that west side can we come out?
Not very far.
Not much further than that because there's a building there. Like that's the proper D-line. Because the way they had this drawn, you would come down that street, like where the old jail was, and come down the hill into that Sally Port. I don't have a laser, but you can see the door cut there. That's where the inmate van would come, come into and all the- That's where the inmate van would come, come into and all the loading and unloading would take place in there.
Okay, we have one more option for space. The, the old library sits down in front of that. And if we could put victim witness in there instead of in the courthouse, that would house victim witness, wouldn't it, the office space?
It would.
And that would take room out of the Sally Port area and Commonwealth Attorney area if we could put them in the old library. And I understand that possibly we can do that, take that building.
I thought one of us was supposed to be looking into that already.
Did you talk to the judge?
I have, but I will. Which judge is it?
Kilgore.
Kilgore.
That it's called a library now or its office? What's he referring?
I call it the old library. I don't know what it's called.
It's just their office space.
It's a storage area.
And wanted to use it for the victim witness.
No, uh,
Yes.
Victim witness, yes. I don't know if that, these things would make any difference or not. But if we could do away with having to do what Frida said had been penciled in on the north and the west and, and leave the Commonwealth Attorney where they are, move victim witness into the library and then build a Sally Port some way to maybe come over behind the courtroom. I don't know how, what's underneath that where you start, where the courtroom is. Is there offices back there? That you could bring a, an entrance in there from a, from a Sally Port? That, that's not the courthouse wall, is it?
What were you talking about?
Uh, right here. No, there's offices back there.
The pink line is the wall. Or whatever color it is.
Could you build a Sally Port maybe here, back here? Bring them in this way some way because there are offices here, aren't there?
No. There's offices like right here. That's the judge's chambers and offices. And this is the courtroom. So, this is the courtroom.
Okay, okay.
If you put it back there, you just have to make sure it could be designed around for the future.
Yeah. You could find somewhere on that wall for prisoners to come in through an enclosed Sally Port.
Okay.
One thing that the initial study looked out twenty years. And one of the most significant increases was the Commonwealth Attorney's Office for whatever reasons, the way they have to do court cases, appeals and things like that. But their office demand, space-wise, increased significantly. So, leaving them where they are and just building a Sally Port doesn't address that issue at all. And we may be looking in five, ten years to build this space out. And in five to ten years, having a forty percent increase in cost.
If, if you went ahead and built a Sally Port on the backside, on the north side, and that would leave the east side to extend later for the Commonwealth Attorney, wouldn't it, Bill? If it didn't, if you didn't have that new part on the, the east side there, Sally Port is not going to take that.
What, what do you mean on the east side? East side, that side, to the right?
Yeah. If you could do a Sally Port up here. Excuse me. If you could do a Sally Port some way here.
That is the Sally Port.
Forget that. Do a Sally Port right here with an entrance out here somewhere, extend it out there till you can come in. And then that would leave this whole area later to add to for the, for the Commonwealth Attorney. Leave them there for now. And when you need to expand with Commonwealth Attorney, you've got room out here to build for them. See what I mean?
Your, your Sally Port, you know, is like the van coming in to unload on the bay.
Right.
And then those other little cut-up sections there are holding cells.
These are holding cells.
Female, male, juvenile, and CO places to be.
Correctional officer.
But you could do the, the Sally Port in, in the L, the upside-down L, with the holding cells right there and then not even mess, I see where you're going.
Not even.
And not even mess with Commonwealth.
That cuts it a whole lot by not having to do all this, by putting the Sally Port, like you said, here and out through here.
Yeah.
And then save this later to build out here to the other buildings for Commonwealth Attorney if we needed.
I see what he's talking about.
Right now, that would, you know, I don't know about cost projections down the road, but that would certainly today cut down on everything.
And I mean, if you look at the cost projections, we're saying it's going to be six hundred and seventy-eight thousand per year. Now, forty percent puts that right close to a million. That's a, that's a chunk of change for fifteen years. It would have to be seven. That's a long. We need to figure out somebody to get that number down. Sorry, I don't have any solutions, just questions.
Where is victim witness now? Frida?
Where are they located? It's in one of, I believe it's on the second floor. I'd have to look. It might not be on this drawing. But I think it's in this section right here.
That's not affected to the taxpayer.
It's not dropped out on this one.
Over and above.
We've got it on the original.
But now that's projected where they are, correct?
Yeah, they're currently in rented space.
Rented space. Now, that's what we approved earlier.
Which would save you over seven hundred dollars.
If we could use that old, old library.
Library.
I will find out with Mr. Bale, his thoughts, and then let you know in September.
I told somebody this, this really weighs on me having to, the money situation we're in right now. And so, be thinking about it.
Well, think about that, the longer you wait, the more it costs.
That's the hard part.
Right.
That's true.
And they would be speeded to go spin the entrance. So, it's between a rock and a hard spot.
Any other discussion, any ideas? Bill?
Yes.
Well, one big idea was the relocation to the Riverside property. Use the Justice Center over there, which require the referendum. The remodeling cost, what would that?
What would it cost to purchase that property from the EDA? Because I reckon they have to pay back all the grants that they used because all that was granted.
I'd say it'd be over two million.
Over two million?
That's my guess.
Plus the building.
Two million plus the building?
Plus the building.
Okay. I don't know if that's really saving them much money. But I mean, it's something to explore. At least get the numbers on.
One of the problems here is parking and you're on a hill. And that would be eliminated at the other location. Looks like a lot of Band-Aids.
Add the extra expense on transportation.
Transportation. And if we could turn, if we could turn Riverside into something profitable, there goes some tax money later.
Well, we just approved the ordinance for the daycare and I'm working on that. So, we'll see if we can at least get some services for the people of this county in here. I think that's probably the biggest thing we're lacking, is services. Sorry, we're getting, we're getting off on, on a different, uh, rabbit hole there. Sorry, I didn't mean to.
Okay, just be thinking about it and any other, any courthouse? Move on to the next one. Frida, you got any comments? Okay, next on the agenda is Ms. Keckley.
I'm happy to answer any questions. I wanted to ask your authority to advertise for any needed public hearings in the next couple of months. Every year I go through the general assembly changes to see if we need to update our ordinances. And I'm working on that. So, if I run across something, if I could already have that authority, then we could save a little time advertising those public hearings and having them. So, if I could have.
I'll make that motion that we give you the authority to write that. Amend the ordinances.
To advertise.
Advertise for the public hearings.
If, if needed.
If needed.
Ms. Aiden made the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Main is second. All in favor, signify a saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
That carries.
That's all I have. Unless you have questions.
Yeah, I just wanted to brag on you for just saying, I've had several questions about ordinances and we went through both the solar and the cell phone tower and the daycare stuff. And I just wanted to thank you for your service on that. You did a great job on, on writing all that up and considering it. I think we probably have one of the best packages for both citizen protection and the, the expansion of industry in the state of Virginia right now with those regulations. So, I really appreciate that. Hopefully, I can talk to the folks from Rockland and Nixville, assuage some of their fears. Thank you for being open to that. Thank you. And I know you, you've helped Mr. Castile here work through some of the information around zoning and slicing up farms and things like that. We really appreciate all the work.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, county administrators report.
You have the claims in your packet, the green sheet. The cash balance in the general fund after claims is six million three hundred ninety-eight thousand, six hundred six dollars and sixty-seven cents. There wasn't a comparison with last year because it's when we were transferring over to Munis and first going live. So, next month, you will see the comparison back for the four years. As far as claims for the month, early claims totaled seven hundred forty-six thousand, one hundred ninety-three dollars and forty-one cents. Current claims are nine hundred nine thousand, one hundred sixty-six dollars and seventy-four cents. For a total claims for the month, one million, six hundred fifty-five thousand, three hundred sixty dollars and fifteen cents. This was the month for the, uh, first quarter of the regional jail payment. So, that was five hundred sixty-two thousand, seven ninety-six, thirty. So, that's why claims are a little more than usual. If you see anything and you're over five thousand list you have any questions about, just let me know. I will point out a hundred and ten thousand dollars to Temper. And that came from the state and was supposed to went to them directly, but was deposited here. So, we had to write that out. That wasn't any county funds going to Temper, just as a note on that one.
Were you going to mention the reconciling of the regional jail? That amount? It's a pretty good number.
That we got back?
Yep.
I don't have that in front of me. The regional jail board met last week. We were getting back additional funding. That was just, that we had overpaid last fiscal year. Some years you have to pay extra in the next budget year, some years you get money back. This was a year that we did get money back. I think total was around, I'm guessing, three hundred thousand. We've got that in our budget except for a hundred and three thousand. So, that hundred and three will go toward the deficit where you took out eight hundred plus thousand to balance the budget. So, that'll help make that look a little less.
Hopefully, with Kevin's dealing with tax, the other taxes won't go down even further.
Yeah, hopefully, we'll end the year better than we anticipated. It's always the goal. So, that's all I have on claims unless you have any other questions. I need approval for one million, six hundred fifty-five thousand, three hundred sixty dollars and fifteen cents.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Ms. Glover made the motion. Mr. Main is second. All in favor, signify a saying aye. Oppose? Motion carries.
Under Ms. Alain's, I have a couple of things. The first one is a request from the sheriff's office for some additional funding for a grant cycle, two-year period that was from January twenty twenty-three to December twenty twenty-four. To make that grant extend for the whole grant period of the end of this year, we would need to add twenty-three thousand, two hundred ninety-nine dollars and thirty-one cents. We do have the money coming from the Regional Improvement Commission that could cover that cost. So, if that's something that you want to do, I can give you that breakdown of how we would do that request.
Any discussion or do we have a motion?
I do have a discussion. Does the school system work with this coordinator?
He does do work in the school system, but not for, not for them directly. He's directly under the sheriff's office.
Someone had mentioned to me about the sharing with the school system on the twenty-three thousand. Since they would be working with this person and they do get student visits from it.
How, how would it work for people that are homeschooled in Scott County? Would they have to pay additional, like if he's a, he's a youth coordinator? Right, so that's all youth in Scott County, including those that are homeschooled. And then, you know, we have a private school in Scott County, King City Christians. Would they need to pay into that as well?
It'd be, that's a good question. It'd be interesting to find out how many of those students would fall within those two classifications.
Of youth?
The homeschool plus the church school.
I'm, I'm not. Are you saying that they're not youth?
No, I'm, I'm saying how many of those, in those two categories would be in his program.
Oh, right. He goes all the way past from seven to?
You know, the church school kids, I just wonder how many are he's working with. I'd say that.
How many of the actual public school kids are he's working with?
Now, he's working with high-risk students. Is that correct?
From what I understand, yes.
Yes.
Wow.
What I'm saying, I doubt the churches, schools going to have many high-risk kids.
Burney kids.
I'm not saying it wouldn't happen, but.
You'd be surprised. Sometimes high-risk kids can come from any kind of household, even really well-to-do households.
When I mentioned the school system, when I, we were talking with Mr., with the sheriff and, and the deputy, they said the school system had already, Frida, correct me if I'm wrong, and Danny, but they had already picked up one extra when this year happened.
They have agreed to pay part of Michaela, the grant writer's salary because she is the one that's in charge of doing the reporting and the filing for the school resource officer grants. So, they are contributing to her. They've also started contributing for their trash pickup, for accounting and purchasing services just in the last few months. So, that was why it was my suggestion not to go to the school system and ask them to put in on this position.
Right. They have been making some efforts.
But it's still, I mean, it puts the county as having to pay it all and the school system's not getting, having to pay any on it.
If you remember, Danny, they, that deputy said that this year, that they didn't ask for enough in the grant. But at the end of the year, he's going to ask for more, over a hundred, which will cover it. So, if we could pick this up through fiscal year or till December?
Till December.
Till December. Then that'll take care of it. They'll, they'll be able to pay it in the future. And this money is, is, this twenty-three, two ninety-nine is extra. It's.
Just be a one-time thing.
One-time thing and it's, it's extra. It was not in our budget to start with. We've picked it up since.
And it has to be used for public safety or schools or transportation. So, the money's there. It's, we're getting more than we budgeted.
Right.
And it's from the casino revenue.
This is the best way to do it.
Commission.
Yeah.
So, it's not taxpayer. So it's not taxpayer technically.
And, you know, everybody benefits, the, all, the whole community benefits, not just the school system. But also the businesses, the people, everyone benefits when everyone is, is a little bit better taken care of.
Yes.
I'll make a motion with you.
I'll second. Darrell made the motion, Mr. Main is second, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed?
Okay, so I have a part B to that thing. We need to appropriate and transfer twenty-three thousand, two hundred ninety-nine dollars and thirty-one cents from Fund One Zero Five Zero Regional Improvement Funds to Sheriff's Office Three One Two Nine Zero Operation Ceasefire Grant. Seventeen thousand, five hundred to line item one thousand dash three one two nine zero dash four zero one seven hundred grant salary. Two thousand, forty-two dollars to line item one thousand dash one three two nine zero dash four zero two one hundred. FICA, three thousand, five hundred thirty-three dollars and twenty-five cents to line item one thousand dash three one two nine zero dash four zero two two one zero VRS. And also two hundred twenty-four dollars and six cents to line item one thousand dash one three two nine zero dash four zero two four zero zero VRS.
Sound moved.
Ms. Ayden made the motion, do we have a second? Mr. Jeter's second, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? And that motion carries.
And then one other thing. The Virginia Association of Counties Annual Conference will be in November and we have three rooms that are available for county, each county in the state to attend. The estimated cost is about a thousand dollars per person for the conference registration and two nights hotel. So it'd be my recommendation that no more than two attend that. That would leave some money for someone or a couple to go to the legislative reception in January or the legislative meetings. But totally, you know, it's up to you either way. I mean, you can always...
I went last year, but last year my wife had a meeting up there too and we kind of doubled dipped between us and the school system. So if anybody else wants to go...
It's in August the fifth.
It's November tenth through the twelfth.
I'm sorry.
It's very informative, a very good meeting to go to.
Registration is open and it does feel fast.
I'd like to go to January's meetings because I didn't get to go this past year. So I personally would love to go in January and drop out of the November. I don't want to go because of my job too. So if somebody wants to go in, in November, I say go for it.
I could probably swing the November one, but I'll leave it open if anybody, if anybody else wants to go.
Put Mr. Main's down. He volunteered. That was an all-in.
It was a good time. It is a, it is a good...
It's a good conference.
Conference.
I want to go particularly for issues with VDOT. I've been talking with several people at VACO and we're trying to get VDOT to reallocate some of their money to the dirt road fund. So we're, we're thinking, you know, five, six times the money in there. It probably won't be that much, but even if we just get a dollar, that would just be a little bit more. And that's more for Scott County, so I really would push that.
Do you get holidays off?
Some.
Oh, that is like a Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, and it's that November holiday.
Veteran's day.
Veteran's Day.
I'll, I'll see what I can swing. I'm, I'm pretty sure I've got the ETL. Fingers crossed.
Okay, so Frieda, I'll check with you before I do your registration. Okay.
I mean, if nobody else wants to go, I'll go for the November. I mean, but I went last year. I went last year, so if somebody else wants to...
You will live there?
It's at the...
I'll take that, isn't it?
What's the hotel?
It's allowed.
What's the hotel?
Omni Homestead.
Yeah, the Omni Homestead.
Not really.
It's swanky.
I would love to go, but I really want to go in January.
And it is a good conference.
And I definitely do not have any PTL to talk about because of my dad, so where I was, I forgot from that.
Those two are probably...
I, I would, I would love to go.
Well, I mean, do you want to go?
I mean, two don't have to go, but if you want to go.
That place is beautiful.
It is beautiful.
Beautiful.
It is.
I've saw the draft agenda, it's got some good stuff on it.
Okay. Oh, will we hear about the... Is that, will we hear about the...
You'll hear about that before then.
Really?
Yeah, that should be anytime now. Yep.
I wrote a, we wrote a VACO award for the...
Scott Service Program.
Scott Service Program.
Each year, the Virginia Association of Counties takes applications for awards throughout, and so does the National Association of Counties. We've never won a VACO award, but we have two National Association of Counties and they're back with the board's picture. One is for Scott Service and one was for the Stony Creek Park that we did up at the Devil's Bathtin.
We submitted the VACO one this year.
Yeah, so we should hear on the VACO one either this week or next week.
I hope so. It's good, it's good to, I think it read well to be able to, if some of another county wanted to adopt what we have done, they could do so. You know, it read that way, I think, I hope.
And I have one other thing. Civic Clerk, I don't know if you all are using the old way or the new way on your tablets, but this will be the last month that we use the old way, so everybody needs to be using Civic Clerk. We won't, we won't do the agenda the old way in September. I meant to do that last month and forgot to mention it, so I did want to make note of that. If you need help with Civic Clerk before the next meeting, please get with us, Darrell. And we'll help you out.
I've got the new one on.
Oh, well, good.
But it ain't, it ain't brought up, no information today.
We'll work on it.
Here it is now, but when you click on the... One of the items?
It's on there.
It brings up. Just comments.
And with Civic Clerk, there's also a public portal, so anything that's in our packet, the citizens can go on our website to get to Civic Clerk and all the information that you have is out there for them as well. Unless it's a closed session item and we can lock that out. So that's all I have.
Okay, we'll move on to our county department reports, Mr. Dishman.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
How are you all?
We should say afternoon, right?
Well, no, it's... Is that right? Don't want to disagree with the supervisor, but...
You can, it's okay.
It, it is still before noon, so... I've got a little different style of report. I think I've given you this style of report in the past, maybe two or three years ago, but a lot of you are, if not all of you are new since then. No, not all of you. You remember.
Excuse me, I'm not new.
And maybe Stephanie was here, I don't know. How long you been here? Four years, three years?
Four and a half now.
Okay, you were here then, I think it was in twenty-one or twenty-two. But anyway, rather than give all those, those details on projects, I've given you some facts and figures on PSA. I thought it might be helpful for some of the new members to see the, see that. Just a lot of information about the PSA, number of customers, number of, number of treatment facilities, a number of sources, source capacity, treatment capacity, number of employees, you know, information about our infrastructure. So it's interesting to see that we have, you know, over approximately three hundred miles of water main and twenty-six, about twenty-six water pump stations, sixteen water storage tanks, seven wastewater pump stations. Like, like it says, six treatment plants, three water and three wastewater. And we have staffing in the, those numbers listed, thirty-three total employees, that includes three part-time folks. And we're, you know, we're proud that we have seventeen licensed water or wastewater plant operators and, or seventeen licensed by the state in water or wastewater. Some of those are not licensed to operate, plant, but they're licensed to operate a distribution system. And then we also have eight, or eight employees with CDL, either Class A or Class B. And also want to highlight, which I highlighted to our board a few months back, that we have not raised our rates for three consecutive years and our rates remain very favorable compared to the, not only the average in the Linnawisco Plan District Commission amongst all municipalities, water systems, wastewater systems, but compared to Lee County PSA, Wise County PSA and the town of Gay City, our rates are significantly lower. And that's a testament to the commitment by our board and to maintain that and to, and the fiscal, you know, responsibility of, of our staff and they work very efficiently and so one of our goals is to maintain rates as low as possible. And on the right-hand side, you see those construction projects lists, those that are under construction. You know, since I was here in April, we have started construction on two or three of these, wherever city water main replacement project has gotten underway since then. And the multi-community, we've started work, a federal road to Shoals Lane, starting soon up in Hunter's Valley to go out of Hunter's Valley East and also Hunter's Valley West, go out there further. And we started on a, a long-term water supply study since April. And we're, we continue to make, we're almost done with the Upper Cliff Mountain Phase Two and Dulfield Wastewater Plant Phase Two and Daniel Boone Sewer. Some of those will hopefully be, be off the list by the time I come back and hopefully in December. And then hopefully by then, we'll have bid out the Yuma and Hilton Sewer Project and the Central Scott Water Project. And then there's several others that our board has approved for funding and that we'll be, we are looking for funding for and then several on the list that are yet to be evaluated for funding. But there is a lot to keep us busy, not just the operation and maintenance of the infrastructure and providing the safe drinking water and the, keeping the rivers and streams clean with adequate and excellent wastewater treatment, but also extending services to the betterment of public health for water and, public water and public sewer service. And trying to have fun doing it.
We had the water outage in Nicholsville there, you want to, the fire department stepped up and...
Yeah, yeah. Wendell?
Yes.
Wendell Burke, yes. Wendell Burke, thank you Wendell Burke and your fire department guys for helping us haul water that day. We had a, you know, problem with some wells were getting low and there was some equipment trouble too and so we, we managed to not run out of water, managed to keep water in our tank. So what we did, we hauled water from a roadside spring. It was Bush Mill is where we hauled it from and hauled it to our water plant and treated it through the water plant.
Has your well straightened out now, Mike?
Uh, yes, yes, those wells, yes.
So it goes other with TV, I'll ask you now instead of next week. The Yuma and Hilton Sewer, you have any timeline on that?
We, we, we hope that that will be bid out this fall. So get permission to advertise for bids. So we're almost there to be able to submit the last thing to our funding agency USDA Rural Development. It depends on how long it takes them to review it and to give us permission to advertise for bids. But we're very hopeful that it can be advertised this fall.
Did a lady come and see you about the drill under the road? Ms. Chapman?
She did, she did. Judy?
Joy.
Joy. Joy Chapman. She did. And I can't remember what we, what we did. But I do remember she came by. Oh, yes, I remember now. So we're waiting. I think she can wait on the project till the project comes. Well, actually, she went and talked to the engineer, so I don't know what they worked out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How's the gathering of user agreements going in Fairview?
I don't know, you tell me.
I've, I've heard they've been down there and gathered some.
I thought you were passing them out, I didn't...
Oh, no.
Oh, okay.
Passing them out, yeah.
Oh, okay, okay.
I was going to pass them out if they had a hard time.
Oh, well, they've had a hard time. So...
It's a hard crown.
Yeah, in Fairview, oh, Fairview's a hard crown. Well, you live there, so I'm not going to, you live there, I'm not going to comment.
I live in Fairview, I can say that.
I like... But so the lane group is working on that project called Fairview Phase Two. It's on, it's on number five down there in the third category on the right. And we do not have sufficient signed user agreements, really, is the bottom line. They're trying to do a project that would involve Lee County PSA and, and in Scott County, but it's, it's not getting off the ground due to the low number of houses and the cost per house is extremely high.
I'd love to sit down and talk with y'all and see who you have user agreements from and who I could go talk to.
Sure, sure. And you can, and I would probably just refer you to the project engineer on that.
That's the lane group?
Mm-hmm. John Broski. The lane group in Big Stone Gap.
Yeah, I've talked to him before.
Yeah.
But that was before they went down in there and started trying to gather user agreements, so...
Yeah. So we're, we're working on, also working on an extension, Phase Two of Robinette Valley. And it looks to be a good project, you know, relatively good. You know, there's some folks down there that have been to our meeting who are out of water. Very similar, exactly like what was going on up on Black Gum Lane. And that, and we just applied for funding for Robinette Valley Phase Two. So Jonathan Phalen, if you are listening, you'll be glad to hear that. And I'll try to answer any questions, but I promised Frieda and Sally that I would be brief if they would text me when to come over, so...
He thinks we forgot.
No, I started to think maybe he did, sitting over here waiting on me.
It's not a very far drive from Pales, is it?
No, no. I did not go. I did eat this morning, but I didn't eat out. I like Chubbies.
Chubbies are pretty good.
You're... You're a Chubbies man because you live in Dulfield.
I'm pretty chubby.
No, I didn't mean that. Chris, I did not mean that. Did not mean that.
It is good, though.
They have the best hot dogs.
We know where to find you in Dulfield.
Yeah, we, they gotta bring their milkshakes back, Chubbies. Get that machine going again. Get that machine going again. We fixed your road problem, Michelle, we fixed your road problem.
Thank you.
Yeah? Sorry it took so long. Anything you want from me? Anything you want to ask for, fuss at me about?
We'll save it for next week.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You all have a good day.
You too. Supervisors' comments, requests, or recommendations, anything from supervisors today?
I do have my regular thing. Should I go in and get started?
Sure.
I've had eleven calls regarding VDOT. Well, eleven calls filed from VDOT citizens' concerns and they're, they are being addressed. I asked Mr. Semter to have a look at the Antioch Trash Site for possible improvements in striping and their, and the passing lanes. Several accidents have occurred there. The engineers from Bristol VDOT did do a study and they recommended it dot change, so they're gonna leave it like this, but they will be placing advanced warning signs, so we should be seeing some signage there. But that is a tricky area. The six-year plan, paving Greens Chapel and Good Cooper, paving is complete. Gillon Waters Chapel in Nicholsville, it's underway. They're doing an excellent job, the contractors. Some paving on schedule will be the High and Odd Federal Money from, in the Devil's Fork, well, from Norton Side. Spurlock Hollow in Dulfield, Eaton Hill in Hiltons, and in 2025, Ovees Creek and Turkey Lick. The VDOT mowing crews are in Hiltons and Yuma Secondary Roads. The contractor, Greenview, is on, has done twenty-three during Waterloo Gap Road and Highway Seventy-One now. And the VDOT crews are doing Hiltons and Yuma Secondary. I had no Orange Bay's complaints, so that's it on VDOT. I did meet with, at the ribbon cutting at the Clinch River in Copper Creek, DWA, Department Wildlife Resources, Mr. Pender, and he works out of the Blacksburg office. He is interested in reintroducing a spotfin chub to the Clinch River. It was in there at one time and due to Norris Dam and pollution, it became extinct, but they're wanting to reintroduce that and he's wanting the board's support on that. He does plan to come to the September Supervisor's Meeting to do a presentation. The species that the spotfin chub only appears in the Holston and Clinch River, so it's very rare. Are there any comments about that particular subject?
Is he coming asking for money or just like a letter of support?
Just basically support.
Okay.
Also, I talked to Nature's Conservancy while I was there and since then I've gotten some communication from them. They're wanting to improve the monk sites on the Clinch River at their expense, so they'll be upgrading those sites.
Is that chub, is it a game fish or what kind of fish?
He had a picture of it, it's very small, it's not a game fish. It'd be hard to see actually, probably if you're just looking in the river.
Right.
The next item is the mini cell towers. You may be aware that Lee County has recently put some in. And I did speak with the, they put in six and they worked with Scott County Telephone and doing that in some areas that they didn't have good coverage. A safety issue was one of the main things. I did speak with Scott County representative and they were working closely with the internet providers and doing that. And they have a mini system now that goes on top of a sixty-foot telephone pole. That's what they used in Lee County. The cost of each of those units is about forty thousand. Mr. Edden said that the, he felt like Scott County had a blackout area for cell coverage about fifty percent. So I would like to do some kind of a study to find out exactly where those areas are. If the board would be up for that. We may look at the potential for.
You'd have to go out and forbid.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was gonna ask, is which consultancy group you're around, we would have to go out and forbid for that.
We'd have to go out and forbid for that.
What's that?
To do a consultant.
Well, I'm not looking for a, I'm just looking for basically, I know of three areas, not just surveying this group. Now, Scott County Telephone has a lot of information already, but I think if we could identify specifically with their help and kind of, I know Dungannon has no coverage.
Dungannon, he never had, buried little. Seemed like it was better years ago than it is now.
I agree.
But the representative with Scott, the representative with Scott County said two of the mini units would take care of Dungannon.
That'd be a good, great help for the people up in there since it's kind of out in the rural area.
Who would be paying for those units?
I'm not sure of the total thing. I think actually the county paid for some of the cost in Lee County. I don't know what funding sources would be available.
And install those?
Pardon?
We'd have to buy and install?
Scott County Telephone's doing installation.
We still have to pay for it, though?
And I don't have all the information on that, but I just think it might be worth pursuing. It solved a lot of their problems in Lee County.
Yeah, I think the other big thing too for cell phone coverage is getting landowners and getting everybody to agree on that to, you know, there was a tower go up in Clinchport within the last two or three months and it was a little bit of a job to get everybody's clearance and approval on that, but I mean.
Did you say they put them up on top of?
Sixty-foot telephone poles.
Put them up on top of the telephone pole?
Yeah.
Do they have to have permission from the, have to have any kind of?
You'd have to have a right-of-way from the telephone company.
From the telephone company to be able to?
Well, the telephone company actually did the installation.
Right, but you still, you still just need to sign, have them sign an agreement even if it's free, if, that you've agreed to house that on there.
I just think it's worth pursuing given the fact that fifty percent of the county is in a blackout as far as cell phones.
I'll be honest, about fifty percent of the county, Nicholsville, up through there, the face no plate, it's about to extend in that. As soon as you come out of fifty-eight, back down to Worthington County, as soon as you come into Scott County, you don't get anything to get down there to, about halfway between Hiltons and the water gap road before you get any kind of signal for a, a blue sinking.
Yeah, I don't need my house.
Done, done, Dan.
I have no service around in that, you know.
Yeah, down Six Hundred in Fairview, it's very spotty.
And I have a tower just right below me.
And even some days if you do have it, it don't mean you're gonna have it tomorrow.
Just away the wind blows.
Yeah, if you wanna, if you wanna start looking into that and seeing.
I think from considering the safety issues, that there might be some possible grants, I don't know.
The other night at the Lenoir-Wisco meeting, they gave us the, the latest on the ARC funds that are available. They said that, well, the Gate City area, wherever City are, and I get these mixed up, the at-risk and disadvantaged, but, but the at-risk, I think, is north of fifty-eight.
There is that.
And, and, and north of fifty-eight, they have access to, it's distressed at, and at risk. And what they told us, I think, was that north of fifty-eight has access to ARC money. So we could possibly go through Lenoir-Wisco for, for this and call it safety. And another place down, Darrell, hey, do you remember down in the Fairview area? There was, there was two, north of fifty-eight, he mentioned, and he mentioned another place.
Of course, it's influenced by the Kingsport job opportunities and income.
But there is ARC money available for those areas and wherever City, Gate City's never, never been helped with anything, but there is some money for that if you, if you'd like to check into it.
Next item is the legislative session in Richmond. That is, we got the date the other night, Lenoir-Wisco, January twenty-ninth. What I would like to propose is that we identify the things we want to do in the county, our highest priorities. You mentioned roads, if you, they, you want to address that. Develop a presentation based on the priorities, schedule appointments with key people in Richmond. Last, my first time last year, I didn't, we didn't do any presentations or ask for anything last year. And I think that, I'd like to see us do that this year. Also make our presentation, if we decide to do that, to Delegate Kilgore and Senator Pillia in advance of this, so they can have that on their agenda when they go to Richmond and do their, their work.
Did we not do any presentations?
Yes, well, it was the end of, it was the end of, the last year and probably three years, we had asked for the Hoover, Natural Tunnel, which was four million dollars. When we went into the recreation area, I mentioned it to them and they, they said Wise County and Norton and some, some of our surrounding counties had already asked for it for us. So that's four million dollars we got last year.
Yeah, I, I agree, having, you know, some presentations lined up, I thought last year was more of a learning experience for us to see what we could get from people. This year we start, need to start asking for things.
Yeah, I think that's the reason you have to go ahead and ask. But the areas that, that I would identify, I think, are top priorities. The road funding, increase the pool of money, cell coverage and economic development. I'd like to see a presentation for each of those three and there's probably others that y'all might come up with, but I think, you know, the legislators, I tried to meet with them in November and I didn't realize then, they were pretty much, had everything, they were working on their projects that they, so we need to let them know earlier what we want them to work on for Scott County, so that's why I bring it up now. The other, the last thing I have is the EDA. We've heard, we've been hearing at our meetings and we heard again today, people are asking about economic development. Before I get into that, we did the hundred fifteen thousand that came back, that wasn't part of their budget, so that, that came back to Scott County, that was on the retail survey. I asked for, contacted EDA office, asked for an update on Dulfield, Dungannon and Riverside, anything going on with that, and they had nothing new to add. I, I hear it constantly and heard it again today, people are asking, what about economic development, what's going on, they used to say Riverside. Are the other board members being approached by citizens when you're out in public? Is this a topic?
I, I hear it on a pretty regular basis. That's one of the, I'd say one of the most things that people ask me. And I guess we all heard a guy, I guess, made a joke out of it, that's the way I attack it today, why don't you all put solar panels on that property? And I've mentioned a time or two putting them, some type of medical center down there on it. Some of the citizens just told me, said, they, they thought that was a pretty good They all like to know why, that that's been there for years and been vacant. I've even heard it looks like a big motel lit up and they won't know why. We've got it all lit up and they're paying for it. Yeah, I, I hear all of them type stories.
Is there anybody here that is, has it, is not getting that is concerned? Mr. Ricky?
I've never had a comment or telephone call.
River, nobody's mentioned Riverside, you?
Not five of you.
I, I've had comments, but I've been telling people to go to the EDA meetings because you will learn a lot if you go to the meetings, so that's what I've been telling people who have been contacting me, is to start going to the meetings and maybe you'll know a little bit more about what's going on with the county.
And John also does that quarterly report for us and that, that is not, and I think the, the citizenry needs to know as well, you know, some of these deals, we, we can't talk about, we're contractually bound not to talk about them until the organizations that either finance them or want to do them make that announcement. And, you know, we don't want to get ahead of ourselves in that and accidentally sink a deal.
Yeah, 'cause that could happen.
Yeah, and I would, I, I would hate to personally be the cause of being like, oh, yeah, there, there is some development coming to this, you know, part and being, you know, as open and honest as I can be with somebody and that ends up saying, sinking the deal. I think that's just counterproductive.
I just think that they really, you know, they are concerned because they wouldn't be calling out to us, but if they do want information, to go to these meetings and, and learn more, they've got a public comment session too during their meetings.
I've been to them before and I'll probably.
They could go there and, and voice, you know, what's going on, what are you doing with this property, what are you doing with that property? And maybe some of their, you know, concerns will be answered by asking those questions by going to the meetings. The meetings are posted on our website, so, and the times, so they can go to these meetings and, and check it out, just like they can come here and ask questions and stuff. They can also go to their meetings and maybe find out a little bit more.
I did go back to the minutes of the May meeting and it was interesting, one of the board members, who I respect, is a successful businessman, he was talking about Moorestown and I think Hamline County, that, that, he said currently there's two hundred houses under construction. And he went to those contractor, or those developers and asked them why, and he said it's the leadership of the camp of the area. And this particular person on our EDA board did say our leadership needs to step up and get in front of this, so I think he was sending a signal.
How would we propose, how would you propose to get five hundred new houses in Stephanie? Because we, we do need that and we've heard that from both, you know, Delegate Kilgore and other places that we need additional houses. And I think you can see from the house prices, the only thing that's going to drive housing down is to have a bump in something. How would you propose to fix any of that?
I don't have to answer that. But I think we, that's something we need to start trying to talk about or think about.
I've been hollering about this for months.
If we maybe would change the ordinance or something that would work better for the people in the county about breaking their land down or something like that, that's would be one thing that I would suggest. I, I don't have danger either.
Yeah, I worry about changing that ordinance because if we change it and they create subpar roads in there, then we become on the foot for those later on. And then it becomes a situation that Mr. Schemen's talking about before, of trying to bring roads into the Virginia system and that's a lot harder than it sounds.
The last thing I, I'm going to cover, when people are asking me about economic development and they usually say Riverside, they said, what's been added in the last twenty years recruited and been established, either industry or business by our EDA?
I should come down to Dulfield sometime because I can show them the footprint from where, when I was a kid, of the factories down there.
The last twenty years?
Of the last twenty years of.
Now, I'm not talking about expansion, I'm talking about new recruits.
Expansions don't create jobs?
No, they ask what's been recruited in the last twenty years. Is there anybody, does anybody, I couldn't think of anything, there might be something, but.
Most of, most of what we've done has been expansion, especially down.
Which is good, it's good, but.
But it's been no new business, is what it is.
Exactly. And, you know, I hadn't thought about it and somebody asked me, I said, man, I didn't realize it'd been that long, but it has.
Do you go to the EDA board meetings?
I read the minutes, I had. I read the minutes and I had been to meetings, yes.
Let me back up on what I said a while ago. You asked if I've heard from anybody. I've not heard from anybody in Scott County telephone or personal, but in Tennessee I have. And I can't discuss that because we talked about it in executive session. A lot of the comments I've heard from Tennessee.
I'm talking about citizens. Asking, asking you about economic development.
No, then no. I asked, I answered you correctly then, no, I'm not in Scott County. I wanted to make sure I was speaking correctly.
Mr. Chairman, it's all right. What you got to look at, Scott County don't have the money to give out like Bristol did and the, uh, places in, up that way. We don't have millions to give them out to come in and that hurts us some.
All we've really got in Scott County is cheap land in comparison to some of these other places.
Right. We can't give them millions of dollars to bring a Astro in or something like that. We don't have the money.
I think that's why we need to go to the state and try to get some money to them. Lynn and Wesco is getting things done regionally, yep. Go ahead. Next on the agenda.
Uh, I think Stephanie had a.
I have something wrong real quick.
And then I have one after that.
Okay.
With the dog tag, uh, collection, uh, going to the veterinarian's office, I would like to do a board consensus, I guess, maybe a motion to make, to, I don't think it necessarily needs to be a, we don't have to rewrite that ordinance, but to be able to put that money in, to allow Kevin to put that money into a separate line item specifically for the animal shelter. So that we, so we can keep track of that. Do we, is that okay to do it like that?
We talked to Kevin during the break and, and I think he's supposed to see Sally, correct?
That was my suggestion to get with her to make sure we didn't need to change the ordinance.
Well.
With the language in it.
Okay.
And then put it in the budget next year in a line item. He, he just, he just takes it and puts it down there now.
Right.
We have an animal shelter fund.
Right.
It would just go there.
Okay.
And then next year make a line out.
Okay. So we don't need to do anything?
We'll follow that, we'll make sure, we'll read everything and make sure.
Just want to make sure that, and just for the record.
He knows it's.
I do, I do support you in that and I think that's a good idea.
And for the record, you know, it's five dollars for one year when you go to the vet and get your dog, uh, your vet, your rabies vaccines, it's ten dollars. Uh, but you can all, you know, ten dollars for three years. So you can think of that as, you know, making a contribution to the animal shelter. Cause that money is just going to go directly to them and I love that. So it won't be a whole lot, but it will be something.
It'll be helpful.
And they can use every penny they get, so I really.
I'm with you, I think that's one of the better things that.
Thanks.
We, we, we really could do because.
And that's the way, that a way everybody can help a little bit.
Well, if you've got any kind of heart, you're going to think where your money's not being given away. It's going back to.
Yes.
To the animals.
Every bit of it and the whole, the whole five dollars or the whole ten dollars, whatever you want to do on that, so. Okay, that's all I have.
Uh. Go, go ahead if you got something, I'll just end with my comment.
You missed go there, you know, I mentioned substitution ordinance. Sally has got it there with her. Uh, she'd looked it up, uh, Hall and Brennance, Houston, the housing. And the biggest thing we had here was cheap land. Uh, so we're going to figure out how the cheap land is going to work to get the housing and get some revenue in here and, uh, but you said you didn't want to change the ordinance.
That particular portion of the ordinance, I think there's other things that we can do to attract housing.
That would be nice apartments.
It would be a nice one.
If that's what you want.
I mean, apartments is getting more people in here and more people means more money for the county. But it also means a better population that potential employers could pull from getting houses in here. Getting any type of housing, any type of housing is a win for Scott County.
When we was in Richmond, didn't they tell us they needed five hundred houses? And they even lost, uh, maybe a business because there wasn't enough housing here to, to people move, to move here because we couldn't support it. So, I mean.
And it, it's a, it's a hard road to walk because you got a lot of people that want to preserve their farms, um, which would, you know, be perfect for development, but they don't want to let them go and I can't blame them for that, you know? It's a.
I wouldn't want to let mine go.
Exactly, it's a, it's an issue that we're going to have to figure out.
Where we.
I'll, I'll start nibbling on that as soon as we can get some take cares in here, if you want to, if you want to keep nibbling on the.
You gotta have, you gotta have population and people before you, before you need a day here. If there ain't no people.
You gotta have services before you can get population in here. I was talking to somebody in Duffield yesterday or the day before. They drop to Lynn Garden every morning to drop their kids off. They come back to Duffield to work and then they drop back to Lynn Garden in the afternoon to pick up their kid. That's a, that's probably an hour and fifteen minutes that they're on the road either way. Or each time they go to Big Mugg and drop them off.
Every day.
That's two hours.
Every day.
Their, their quality of life is suffering because we don't have the necessary amenities for parents. And I think that's something that we need to start, you know, Scott County's population is aging. Uh, and there's not many kids that are staying here. In fact, when I first moved into our neighborhood in Tom's Village, everyone came up and was excited because there was children in the neighborhood again. I heard it from a lot of the residents. So we need to, we need to figure out what we can do to make it successful. Make, make it successful and attractive to people. Uh, but, you know, to, to end off my comments, I just want to say, you know, school starts back soon and, um, we wish all the students of Scott County well and do your best this year and we'll do our best. That's it.
Any other comments? We do need to go into closed session today. We have two items, number three, real estate in Gate City. And number five, prospective industry in Duffield and Weber City. Do we have a motion to go into closed session?
I'll make that one.
I'll say Castile, Mr. Castile made the motion, Mr. Lane is second. All in favor, sign if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Go back to the open session. Whereas Scott County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed meeting on the state pursuant to an affirmative direct recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Scott County Board of Supervisors that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with the Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that Scott County Board of Supervisors hereby certify that to the vest of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convened in closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Scott County Board of Supervisors. Do we have a motion that this happened?
Do a roll call.
Oh yeah, we got to do a roll call.
Motion first.
Oh, okay. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Manus made the motion and it was signed by Ms. Addington. Roll call vote by clerk, please.
Mr. Jeters not here. Ms. Glover?
Yes.
Mr. Skee?
Yes.
Mr. Bricky?
Yes.
Mr. Castile?
Here.
Mr. Manus?
Yes.
And Ms. Addington?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Ready? Yeah, I make a motion that this board hereby direct staff to advertise a public hearing to dispose of forfeited real property on Bristol Highway once a conveyance has been arranged by the sheriff's office.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
In the second, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I also make a motion that this board hereby direct staff to advertise real property and negotiate on our behalf for property in Gate City. I think I phrased that right.
For public hearing, advertise for public hearing.
And advertise for public hearing.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
In the second, all in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And that's it. We will adjourn until September the fourth at nine o'clock.